This program is brought to you by cable franchise fees and generous donations from viewers like you.
And as we develop our budget, one of the first things we do according to the charter is to share information about our financial situation. This includes, you know, our current condition of the town, revenue forecast, expenditure forecasts. And the end result is that this will then go to the town council to develop budget guidelines for us as we begin, as the three entities, the library, the schools, and the town begin to develop our budgets for FY23. So, but this is a team effort. So as Lynn mentioned, you know, it's our finance team that really puts us together under the leadership of Sean Magano. Holly, Sonia Aldrich, who's been doing this for years, is our comptroller, assistant comptroller, Holly Bowser. Jen LaFountain is our treasure collector and Kim Mu, who this is her first financial indicators project. So welcome, Kim, to this as well. So next slide. So what, what, this is just a preview, what we're going to do. There is a lot of information we're sharing. We anticipate that there could be questions and that you may have questions as we move forward and we'll be, we're here to answer your questions even after we finish this presentation. After this presentation, you know, as I said, we'll look at the current fiscal year, which is FY22, assumptions and projections into FY23, and sort of major challenges we see going forward. And then we also, we will conclude with a budget planning calendar. So next slide. So the major challenges, we, so there's three sort of categories of things here, and these are the big takeaways. So not to, one is that we have significant challenges.
I need to interrupt you because I've been informed that somehow or another, there's no live stream on Amherst Media. Is that the case?
I don't know.
See now.
I see the slides.
No, that's not what I meant was, is it on Amherst Media? Thank you. Okay, continue, please. I'm sorry, Paul.
Okay, no problem. So tonight's takeaways, we, we are still working through COVID-19. Our local receipts are state aid, our enterprise funds are still suffering under COVID-19, and we are, need to be cautious as we emerge from this pandemic. We continue to do our preparation for our major capital projects. We have now have two that are actively moving forward. We want to recognize that there's a big pressure on taxpayers. We've heard over and over about the impact on resident homeowners in the taxes in our town. And we're, want to make sure that that's always front and center as we think about the expenditures that we're, that we're making. And then we need to be balancing the investments we're making going forward with our ability to sustain those investments over time. We don't look at these as one-year initiatives, but they have to be looked at over the long term. The good news is that we have had, we have had some major accomplishments, you know, we have a very strong position coming out of COVID. We had a balanced budget for FY22, and we continue to focus our growing reserves and reducing our debt. And the other good news that came out this year is that we did go to the bond rating agencies and we had our excellent bond rating reaffirmed by the bond rating agencies, even in the middle of a pandemic, which was quite an accomplishment and credit to our finance team. And that leads us to why we are in good shape right now. We have excellent, and these are things that we'll talk, touch on a little bit later. We have excellent fiscal management and forward-looking planning, and this is the beginning of it. Not many towns do something like this. This is unusual that all the elected officials get together and they start to talk, share information, start to agree on something. We have strong financial systems. Again, that has been built up over decades of work led by very strong financial leaders embodied by Sonia Aldrich, quite frankly. We have strong working relationships between the library, the schools, and the town. So we're not, there's a lot of infighting, there's a lot of disagreements, and we go back and forth, but it's, we work towards solutions. And we work as a team to come up with, with good solutions. The hallmark of our budget over time has been that we have slow, steady growth, that we're not looking to have a gigantic sort of input into the, into our fiscal system without, with no sustainability. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Sean Magano, who's going to start this press.
Thank you, Paul. So we're going to start with a couple high-level comparisons between FY13 and FY22. This first one is looking at revenues and comparing our four major categories of revenues. The takeaway here is that you'll see local receipts has dropped as a, as an overall slice and from FY13 to FY22. And at the same time, property tax has grown. We think this is, or we know this is temporary. This is something that is directly related to the pandemic. Our local receipts took a big drop, especially in the budgeting, on the budgeting side of it. And in FY22, it's starting to recover and we anticipate this will start to, or will continue reversing itself in FY23. But this shift is something that's noteworthy for, for this year. On the expenditure, expenditure side, you'll see the couple things. So one is a drop at the elementary schools from 32% to 29% in FY22. Some of that's an accounting mechanic. We used to have charter and choice tuition that were in the elementary school budgets that was taken out. And we, school choice tuition is something that wasn't really around back in FY13, but we started accepting school choice students. And now there's a separate school choice fund that supports part of the operating budget, and that's not included in the FY22 slice. So some of that drop is just related to accounting and new sources of funds. But there is a real sort of drop at the schools, at the town, the library, from FY13 to FY22. And that's a shift from operations to capital and to that miscellaneous section. On the capital front, we know that we've intentionally been trying to grow our, our ongoing commitment to capital to catch up on deferred maintenance and to prepare for the four building projects. So that makes sense. And in miscellaneous, the biggest cost driver there is our pension assessment. So that grows anywhere between seven to 10% per year. It's directly related to how many staff we have on contract. And unfortunately, that's going to continue for the next five to 10 years, or not five to 10 years, 10 years, 10 to 15 years, depending on how long the Hampshire County retirement system takes to be fully funded. So that miscellaneous slice will likely continue to grow as our pension assessments are, are growing at a faster rate than everything else. And so that's important to keep in mind when we talk about some of the new programs that we're looking at, whether it be the CREST program or DEI or any other program where we're adding staff, that will contribute to our pension assessment growing at a faster rate than it's already growing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jen LaFountain.
So this slide is showing the property tax revenue. Property tax revenue is the primary source of both operating and capital spending. This includes new growth that has been averaging about $650,000 annually over the last 10 years. The last override was, I believe, in 2011. With the blue line being actual dollars and the red line being constant dollars, this analysis shows that the only significant increases in constant dollars from year to year occurred when the community passed an override. And this is adjusted for inflation. Next slide, please. This slide shows us the uncollected property taxes. This shows a 10-year history of uncollected taxes as a percentage of the net levy. FY20 was slightly higher due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The town had adopted an extended due date for the fourth quarter property taxes, pushing the due date from May 1st to June 30th without any penalty. This also pushed out the demand bills into July into the next fiscal year. The percent of uncollected taxes at the end of July was back under 2%, which is more in line with what we expect to see. Overall, this slide shows our collection rates to be very favorable to the bond rating agencies as we have remained well below the 5% or above warning indicator. Next slide.
All right. So this is back to me. So this is a comparison of state aid, actual dollars to inflation-adjusted dollars from 2012 to 2021. It looks like our state aid has been going up in terms of actual dollars, but again, when you look at the inflation side, it's, it has increased, but not nearly as much. A couple of things, in 2021, you'll see state aid dipped, which sort of looks like a bad thing, but it was actually related to good news, which is our charter tuition cost dropped significantly in 2021. And therefore, our charter tuition reimbursement dropped significantly in 2021, which goes into our state aid bucket. So it is a drop, but it's actually a good news drop. There's a couple areas here I wanted to just identify for counselors and others who want to advocate on behalf of the town. Two areas of state aid, one I just mentioned, charter tuition is an area that's always underfunded. They haven't fully funded in many years. The system is, you know, is not really working when you can never fully fund it. So if we can ever get that fully funded or a system that reimburses us at a, at a higher rate, that would go a long way towards helping the town. And then the other area is state-owned land, which also falls into the state aid bucket. Amherst has a lot of state-owned land because of the university. I think I checked today, we have about 1,800 acres. And obviously, there's lots of building improvements on top of those, those acres. And we get very little money, you know, in retro, in comparison to how many acres the state owns. So anything we can do to boost either charter tuition aid or the, or the state-owned land reimbursement would go a long way towards helping the town. This chart shows state aid as a percentage of overall, or of general fund operating revenue. So it's been pretty flat since 2012. There was a little spike, not spike, but a little bump up in 2020 when our local receipts dropped off. But overall, it stayed at around that 20% benchmark. And this last state aid chart, so this, the red bar is, is our total state aid minus some offsets that are things that sort of wash out. The green bar are state assessments. So those are expenses. And then the, the most important line on this chart is the purple line, which is our net state aid. So it's, that stayed pretty flat over the years. Again, that, that went up a little bit in 2021 because of what I mentioned earlier, where charter tuition dropped. So our charter tuition dropped by a larger, a large amount. Our charter tuition reimbursement dropped by a little bit less, but the, the net effect was an increase in our net state aid, which was good. But one thing to note here is we will generally get 2%, 3%, 4% increases in unrestricted general government aid every year. However, you can see that that's not really materializing and an increase in that state aid. And that's because those state assessments are eating that increase. So for most of those years, what was growing was charter tuition, which would offset a lot of the increase you would get on the state aid side. So a little bit of good news for 2021, but it's mostly flat. And I think Kim is going to start on this slide, right, Kim?
Yes. So as you will see, this has been fairly flat through, from 2012 to 2019. Back in 2007 through 2013, there was the recession, which affected our new growth. And we're sort of seeing the same thing happen with COVID. So you'll see that it's gone, our new growth has gone down a little bit. I do expect to see the new growth go up this, for this fiscal year. I do have a couple of big projects that I can tell you about quickly that are happening. Two really big projects are two solar arrays that will be going up, one on the landfill and one at the Hickory Ridge Golf Course. So that will, those, those will be some pretty significant figures. We also have the East Street School, which is out for bid right now for low-income housing. So this will not only bring in a property that has prior, previously been exempt, but this will also add any new, any new work that's been done to the building to make it affordable housing. We also have a 462 Main Street, which is mostly apartments. There are a few, very few commercial spaces there. But that is just about complete, if not, you know, any day now. So that will bring a pretty significant number back to our new growth. And then the last two is the project that, on North Hampton Road for the lower-income housing, more affordable housing to our downtown area, that will bring a pretty significant new growth figure. And our One South University Drive, which is at the corner across the street from Big Y, that is been sort of stuck in a, in a, in a COVID spot, I guess, if you want to call it. But it has started to make way again. And as you have seen, probably, the building has begun to move along pretty quickly. So we should see some pretty good numbers for our new growth in the coming years.
Thanks, Kim. And the one thing I'll add to that is in addition to new growth, other areas that have dropped off in 2020 and 2021 were meals tax and hotel and motel excise tax. Those are two things that because of the pandemic and the, the decline in activity downtown drove some of these reductions. The good news is, again, we already looking at the beginning of FY22, some of that's starting to bounce back. And we expect that 2021 will be the floor and that this will start to recover the next time you see this, this chart. Holly?
You're muted. Okay, let's try that again. This chart here compares our three major general fund revenue sources by showing each adjusted for inflation and in actual dollars. The, the red lines at the top are our property taxes, our biggest revenue source. It does increase annually, but only by the allowable limits of proposition two and a half. This chart shows that although our property taxes have been increasing, it is not really keeping up with inflation. The middle is state aid. The green lines are second biggest revenue source. All this, although this was very slowly increasing and keeping better pace with inflation, we're still below our peak levels back in 2008. And as Sean has pointed out, state aid did go down slightly from 2020 to 2021, which he has already explained. The last revenue, revenue sources shown here are local receipts, the purple lines. Local receipts have remained relatively flat. And again, they're keeping better pace with inflation. And the, our local receipts dropped dramatically in 2021 due to the pandemic. This was, what was I saying here? I'm sorry. So our budgeted local receipts for FY21 were only approximately 60% of FY20's numbers. You know, due to the pandemic, we did have to reduce what we were expected to come in. And we are hoping that we're going to return to close to normal levels for FY22. Things are looking back on track. The next slide. So these are our operating expenditures per capita, again, in adjusted for inflation. They really sort of remain relatively flat, although it, it looks like we're going up a fair amount in, in actual dollars when adjusted for inflation. FY20 is higher than 2012 by only five, just over 5%. And as the next slide will show, our expenditures per capita are fairly low. And we've been able to manage this through effective financial policies, conservative budgeting, good management. So next slide shows our operating expenditures per capita and comparing ourselves to other communities. This makes it easier to interpret much of the data in this presentation. And this shows that Amherst is below all of our peer communities and we are well below the state average. We're less than two-thirds of the state average operating expenditures per capita. And again, this compares us to our peer communities. Many years ago, these communities were picked out by a former finance director. And since most of these communities were out in the eastern part of the state, we added the top chart, which are some more local communities to our comparisons. And, and you know, as you can see here, we're, we're well below most of our similar communities and our peer communities locally. Next slide. So this chart depicts the budgeted municipal financial, municipal staffing levels for our general fund only. Just to note that this does not include our enterprise funds, water, sewer, landfill, and parking, and it does not include school staffing levels. They do have staffing information on their website. So this shows only the past 10 years, and we've had approximately 11 FTEs or full-time equivalent positions added. But in this case, it's sort of important to mention, looking back a little bit farther, back in 2017, we peaked with almost 213 positions, but during the last recession, you know, things went down, we lost over 21 full-time positions, we had a 10% reduction in our workforce. So we've slowly been building back up since the last recession and, you know, growing our workforce. But we are very thoughtful and very careful about when and where we add new positions. You will see that there was a slight loss between FY20 and FY21. And that is the result of a lot of little tweaks in positions, but mostly there were two part-time positions in the finance department that were lost. There was a full-time position in the Amherst Rec Department that was lost. And then a little bit of an increase in our House Department positions because those were part-time and they have now returned to full-time positions. And I do just want to point out that this is budgeted positions. It does not take into account any vacant positions. So next slide. So the red bar here shows our total budgeted salaries and benefits are slowly rising, and that's consistent with the chart on the prior slide. Obviously, as staffing levels increase, so do our benefits associated with that. The benefits here include COLAS, step increases, retirement costs, and insurance, unemployment insurance, life insurance, health insurance. The blue line at the top is the salaries and benefits as a percentage of our total budget. And although it's fluctuated a bit over the years, it still has remained relatively flat for a long period of time. This is up just over 3% in a 10-year timeframe. The green line in the middle there is the benefits as a percentage of just the salary and wages portion of our budget. And again, you know, there are some small fluctuations going from a fully insured healthcare system to a, I'm sorry, from a self-insured healthcare system to a fully insured group plan with Maya has made the last three years, you know, relatively flat. You know, we're hoping that the change from our self-insured health system to the Maya will continue to have a very positive impact on our benefits. And next slide and on to Sonia, I think.
I think that's me.
Back, back to Jen.
Yep, back to me. So this slide is about our debt service. As Paul had stated earlier, we remain a double A-plus community that was last reaffirmed with our bond rating back in May, I believe. This is our annual debt expense as a percent of our operating net revenue. These are our annual principal and interest payments on existing debt. This chart shows that we have been consistently low. The 2013 increase is due to refunding, which inflated that year. However, it lowered the subsequent years. Because of our debt, because our debt expense is low currently at 1.8%, we have greater flexibility to issue new debt. And debt service is part of the capital budget. Next slide, please. So this, this slide shows us compared to other communities throughout Massachusetts. Above compares us to our neighboring communities and below for debt service as a percentage of the operating budget. Overall, that did not change, but shows a slight uptick due to the conversion of bond anticipation notes, which are short-term debt to bonds, long-term debt. Our credit rating is strong due to a low percentage of debt relative to general fund revenue and also to, to good fiscal management. Next slide, please. Oh, I had, I'm sorry, something I said on that last slide is supposed to go with this slide about our overall debt not changing, but the slight uptick is due to the conversion from bond anticipation to short to long-term debt. Amherst's long-term debt load has remained relatively low and has actually decreased in recent years, as shown in this slide. Next slide. This is a comparison to other compute, other communities in Massachusetts above. And below is a comparison. Above is our neighboring communities and below is the other communities in Massachusetts, showing what our outstanding debt is as a percentage of assessed value for FY19. Again, we remained a strong double A-plus credit rating as a result of this low percentage of debt relative to our general fund revenue. I think the next slide goes to Sonia.
Yep. Um, this slide shows our unfunded liabilities. The blue is our pension liability and the red is our other post-employment benefits, which is mainly retiree health benefits. The pension liability is currently funded at 62.4% and is expected to be fully funded by 2023. OPEB is currently at 9.7%. At the close of fiscal year '21, OPEB balance in the fund was just under $10 million. The most important thing to, to note is that unfunded liabilities fluctuate each time we update our actuary studies. We're constantly working on updating our funding plan for OPEB. The most significant change will be in the future when we redirect funding from pension to our, to pay off our OPEB liability. Bond rating agencies will look at the funding plans for these when assigning us bond rates. And our financial, our financials show that we had a $67.8 million unfunded liability for OPEB.
Just to note, it's 2033, not 2023 for the pension to be paid.
Did I say 23? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
33. Next slide, please. This is the good slide. As of July 1st, our, our reserves were reached 27%. This represents the balance of the stabilization fund and the certification of free cash at the beginning of the year. It does not take into consideration any appropriations that happen during the year. This is always for the beginning of the year only. A couple of factors that played a role in our reserves increasing. 5.5% is we're calculating from a, from a significantly reduced budget. And we had a net operating surplus of 4.9 million. The 4.9 million is basically because we reduced our local receipts revenue budget, but recovery happened better than we had expected and quicker than we anticipated. Operating budgets were spent sparingly and we took, we took advantage of cares, grants, and other grant funding whenever we could. We also had vacant positions that did not get filled until mid or towards the end of the, later in the year. If our budgets had grown, as usual, we'd be closer to 25% than, than 27% at this point in time. Our current financial policies recommend our reserves to be between 5 and 15%, which is illustrated on the slide. You see the yellow arrow and the two green lines on here. We reached our 15% back in 2017. We intentionally, but we intentionally continue to increase our reserves, planning for investments in major capital by using our reserves against future spikes in debt service. Or if we couldn't maintain our 10% of the levy for capital each year. Having good reserves provide the town with greater flexibility. It buys us time to react to any loss of revenue such as state aid cuts or unforeseen emergencies like COVID. We are fortunate this year, not, this year and last year, not to have had to use reserves. However, it was good to have that flexibility when we went through this. Good reserves are a favorable financial indicator for bond rating agencies, and it helps give us lower interest rates in borrowing. And that's it. I think it goes back to you, Sean.
Yeah, so just, so just real quick, you want to talk about the slides, Sonia?
Yeah, this is a comparison with our neighboring communities and with communities with similar demographics. As a comparison.
All right.
That's it.
All right, so, so that's the end of the charts. Um, so thinking about FY twenty-two, we, um, again, as Paul mentioned earlier, we're in a very strong financial position. The, the updated bond rating acknowledged these bullet points that, um, that bond rating analysis is on the town, town's website under the finance department. So if anybody wants to read it, it's, it's actually got some interesting um, analysis in there. So that's all posted online. Um, and as Sonya just mentioned, our reserves are, are quite strong. Um, some of the highlights from FY twenty-two, we continue to have really strong collaboration between the, the schools, the town, the library, both the point, um, elected officials and staff. Uh, the operating budgets increased two point one percent in FY twenty-two. This isn't quite where we want it to be, but it, it's much better than where we were in FY twenty-one. Um, and it improved throughout the year, so that was positive. We were able to increase our capital spending closer to our targets. Um, we cut it quite a bit in FY twenty-one. I think we ended up between eight and nine percent for FY twenty-two, so that was positive. And we were able to reallocate some funding within the budget to um begin to create two new departments, a diversity, equity and inclusion department and the um CREST program that we'll talk about later tonight. We do have some challenges, um, managing the public health and public safety related to COVID. Um, that's created um a lot of new responsibilities for the public health department, police, EMS, really, really every department in town. That's sort of the number one priority. And so that's a new thing in the last couple of years that we've had to, to deal with. Uh, building new departments, um, this specifically focused on the, the community responder program, but also the DEI department. That's not something we do a lot of. Um, I can't recall any new departments except for maybe one at the schools during my time there. Um, but it takes a lot of, of planning, especially a department like this. Um, takes a lot of planning, and so that's a challenge as we, we go forward. Um, we still have a high degree of uncertainty around what the future of the economy looks like in Amherst. Um, the colleges and the university and their plans, and so um, just projecting forward is going to be a little different than it's been in the past until we get back um some stability. And then, as Paul mentioned earlier, making sure that when we talk about new programs, um, that we come up with sustainable plans to add them to the operating budget and are able to maintain the existing services that we want to keep. Um, I was thinking about this before the presentation tonight, that we've sort of laid out a vision to add the, the CREST program, the DEI department. Um, we want to add firefighters. We need to continue to invest in sustainability. Um, we're working um to explore reparations. And at the same time, we still have to prepare for these four building projects. So I think it's all doable, um, but we do have to look at it in sort of a chunk of time, a five-year time span. And how do we use our resources wisely to, to do all those things while maintaining our existing services? So we're going to look at projections for FY twenty-three in a minute. They're again, very early. Some of the assumptions uh on the revenue side, we're projecting the two and a half percent increase um to the base levy uh for property taxes. We have a six hundred thousand dollar estimate for new growth. We think this will come in better by the time it's all said and done. We, we start conservative. Um, but we think in the next month or two, working with the assessors office, this might pick up a little bit. Uh, state aid, we've left flat. We've, we've aligned it with the FY twenty-two cherry sheet. However, that's another area in January. Hopefully, when we get the governor's budget, we expect that those numbers will come in better. Um, local receipts, we're projecting significant growth, um, but again, it's from a lower base. Enterprise fund reimbursements, so um, these are indirect reimbursements that the enterprise funds pay the general fund and they help support the general fund budget. So water and sewer, we're expecting to get back to normal. We've looked at consumption um so far this year in FY twenty-two and it's getting back to where consumption was pre-pandemic, so that's a positive. Um, the transportation fund, I'd say, is still sort of in a um, a wait-and-see state. It didn't have much of a reserve balance to begin with. The pandemic really impacted our parking revenues, which are primarily, you know, fees from permits and meters. Um, and when the college closed and there was no activity downtown, those revenues really took a hit. Um, so we're not expecting any indirect costs, reimbursements from the transportation fund or from solid waste. Um, one silver lining for solid waste is we do have that um solar field that is going on, hopefully next year. That has the potential to generate additional revenues um in the solid waste fund and get that enterprise fund in a much more sustainable position for, for several years to come. And at this point, we're not expecting any override or planning for any override for FY twenty-three. On the expenditure side, we are projecting two and a half percent increases for operating budgets. Um, elementary schools are coming in a little bit higher because of the accounting adjustment we do for charter and choice tuition. So the charter and choice tuition, the net dropped, so that resulted in a, a little bit of an increase for the elementary school budget. I think last year was a decrease, so um, it changes from year to year. And we are also um projecting an additional three hundred thousand for the town budget um to support the implementation of the CREST program. So this number is an estimate at this point. We think it, um, it's, it's roughly half of what we need to implement um to fully fund the, the CREST program in FY twenty-three. The plan is for the other half to come out of the, the two and a half percent increase to the town budget. Um, and it will all depend on how level services, when we do our level service projections, which are, we haven't done yet. Um, when we do those, that number could drop a little bit, it might go up. Um, but the main takeaway is that we anticipate the town operating budget needing additional funds in order to fully implement those programs or to the CREST program and the DEI program. Um, some things in the operating budgets that are still that are, that are major factors that are still being, um, that aren't settled yet are the collective bargaining agreements. Um, I think just about all the agreements need to be negotiated for FY twenty-three, um, so that will, how those are settled will impact our level services budget. And we're right now projecting a five percent increase for health insurance, but we will know that number, um, usually in January, we'll get that number, so we'll, we'll have an exact, um, an exact amount for FY twenty-three. We're projecting a seven percent increase to the retirement assessment. And that's usually pretty close to, to actual based on history. Uh, we're projecting capital back to ten percent of the levy, which is right on track with our plan for the four building projects. Um, so that gets us in a good position to, to stay on that plan and move forward. Five hundred thousand for OPEB, which is sort of our base level that we want to be at. We cut that the last couple of years, but this gets us back to that, that base level. And then again, just to reiterate, we're, we're projecting that we will include the, the ten FTE community responder program in the operating budget. And in addition, not noted here, but also the, the two um point O FTE diversity, equity and inclusion department um in the operating budget as well. And then Paul, you have a couple of slides before I go into the projections.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I mean, this, these are the needs that we've identified through the schools, the town and the library, and um, I know our time is running out, but I think um, we've talked about the town, the schools clearly have facility needs. The impact of COVID nineteen, uh, the, we'll be talking on Saturday about the regional assessment formula, uh, declining enrollment uh in changing in school choice revenues. Um, and then the, the significant new program, uh, new, new initiative to transition the sixth grade to the middle school. And for the library, again, facility needs, uh, DEI efforts, uh, trying to maintain staffing costs and trying to reduce the reliance on the endowment um by increasing fundraising efforts and the contributions from the town along with all those things. Um, big picture, um, we, we're still not totally out of the woods on COVID nineteen. We're contin, we're concerned about that. Um, it, you know, there has been good growth and for new growth, which is drives in more revenue by, you see the new uh mostly apartment complexes being built or apartment buildings. Um, reducing the town's carbon footprint will require investment and it's a priority of the town, so we're ready to do that. And also looking at introducing our two new programs uh that we initiated this year, and you have those in front of you for tonight for you to referral to your committees. Um, our mission on this from staff point of view is going to be our fiscal discipline and making sure that we are able to move forward with our major capital projects. Um, and then also, as we always say, we think about what's the impact on our taxpayers. Um, we will be continued to manage our resources. Um, we will be using strategic use of reserves at, at different times, and we'll come to the council to talk about what that looks like. Um, we have ARPM funds, um, and uh we have been very, very successful at securing grants, which has helped us move a lot of our things for a lot of our issues forward, so. Um, and then we have, right now, we continue with our strategy of having one debt exclusion uh for capital to, to address our major capital needs.
Thanks, Paul. So this, um, we're going to finish up with the projections, the sheet you're used to seeing, so it's um, this first slide is our revenues and it's got FY twenty, actual FY twenty-one, actual FY twenty-two budget. And it says FY twenty-three budget, it should say budget projection or FY twenty-three projection, so just, just note that one little edit. Um, the top section is property taxes. So as I mentioned before, we're projecting a two and a half percent allowable increase um to the base levy and then six hundred thousand for new growth. So we, we do think that new growth might come in a little better in FY twenty-three, and the other area where this will, we think this will improve in the next month or two. Um, when we finalize new growth uh is the FY twenty-two new growth, which is still at the estimated level. Um, that's being finalized now, and we anticipate that will come in a little better and boost this section up. Uh, but overall, property tax section is growing at three and a half percent. And the local receipts, this section is growing at sixteen percent, again, from a lower base, um, a couple noteworthy items here. Uh, motor vehicle excise tax, we've returned to pre-pandemic levels. A lot of these, we've returned to close either two or close to pre-pandemic levels based on what we're seeing so far, not all, but um, but many of these categories. Um, hotel motel and meals excise, we're seeing that coming in better so far in FY twenty-two, which is good, that, that's, I think, a good indicator of the downtown recovery is to see those numbers start to go back up, which they are. And the other one I will point out is, um, so cannabis tax, you'll see we've projected two hundred thousand for the tax portion of that. Um, the impact fee side is in the fees, we still haven't budgeted that. Um, you can see what we received in FY twenty-one, which is about two hundred and thirty-six thousand. The, the fee side of cannabis is the, um, the one, the side that's restricted for specific uses. Um, so when we've identified what those specific uses are, what's eligible and what we want to fund with it, then the budget will go in um with it, and I think that's a discussion we'll probably have um during this upcoming budget cycle for FY twenty-three. State aid is relatively flat. There's some small adjustments to align it with the FY twenty-two cherry sheet. Um, but again, this is an area where we anticipate we'll do better when we get the governor's budget. And then other financing sources, this includes primarily transfers from other funds that support the general fund budget. The ambulance fund, we've boosted up five percent and, and that's consistent with what we actually received in FY twenty-one. Um, and then the enterprise fund reimbursement, you'll see there are going back up because we're, we're projecting water and sewer back to normal. Um, but that still has some room to go once we can get transportation back in there um with, within direct cost support. Um, and then miscellaneous, you'll see a big drop um going down to seventy-five thousand. That's because we had that one-time capital reserve in FY twenty-two that was carried over from FY twenty-one. Um, but so that one-time capital reserve went away, and so we're just left with a seventy-five thousand. That's from Comcast to support the um, the I-NET project that helps pay the debt for the, the I-NET municipal fiber project. So overall revenues, we're projecting to go up two point nine percent, but that should come in. Um, that should come up more when we get the state aid uh increases in there. On the expense side, you'll see the, the two and a half percent operating budget increases that I mentioned, and then with the three hundred thousand for the town, it comes in at three point seven percent increase. Um, capital is at ten percent. The good news on the capital front is if you look at the debt service current, that continues to drop off. A couple um additional projects were fully paid off. Um, and so that drops down even lower, which leaves a lot of um funding for new projects um as we go forward. In miscellaneous, we have the seven percent increase for the retirement assessment. One thing to note is the um, the pension impact from any new departments won't hit until FY twenty-four. The way that works is that it's based on our staffing in October, so FY twenty-three is based on this October staffing, so if it wasn't, um, if they weren't here in October, then they won't be reflected in next year's pension assessment. So again, we're expecting that impact to hit in FY twenty-four. Um, the regional lockup facility assessment, that was sort of flat and there forever, has gone away. Um, there, we got a letter saying that we were no longer going to have to pay it, um, and that I think they were anticipating the state to fund that. And then OPEB was going back, um, back to five hundred thousand. For state assessments, um down in the unappropriated uses section, we have a three percent increase. Um, we don't, this is another number that we won't know for a little bit. Um, the biggest number in here that fluctuates is charter tuition. We saw a large drop in FY twenty one, twenty-one or twenty-two. Um, i- if we see an increase of ten students, this could go way up. If we see a decrease of a few students, this could go down. Um, it, it will get those updated enrollment figures pretty soon. And um, and so we'll update, update this accordingly when we get um new, new information. So right now, the expense side is going up three point seven percent, and so we have a gap of about six hundred and eighty-five thousand um with some variables that we anticipate will get better, some variables that could get worse. Um, but again, that's, this is early, so um that's not unexpected. And then we'll close with just our budget calendar. So we're doing the um financial indicators tonight with a forum to follow. Uh, we're meeting with the finance committee tomorrow to follow up on this presentation tonight and start talking about budget guidelines. Um, and then the next, uh, the next two months will be heavy in developing budget guidelines, which will um lead us into everything else. And with that, I will end and turn it back.
And we'll take the slide presentation down. Um, I just want to acknowledge a couple of things. First of all, um, the record should show that Steve Schreiber joined us at around six thirty. Um, we, at this point, have twenty people in the audience, including Representative Mindy Dom. And uh, I've also just want to apologize to people, we've had some technical difficulties with links and also with Amherst media, and we're trying to work on all of those. Okay, uh, with that, I'm going to call on Andy Steinberg quickly and then ask for any comments or questions.
I really don't have uh anything to add to what was already been reported. I had wanted to make sure that um uh, everyone who's here understands that the next step is that we top council guidelines where the council uh discusses the budget and makes presentation to the town manager about what um, our thoughts are about the budget um that he's going to present to us in May. And then he considers that input as uh, he develops the budget. And uh, that process begins tomorrow and uh we have uh several meetings and they were on the calendar that uh was presented to you by Sean.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Are there questions or comments from the members who are here? Peter Demling, you have your hand, hold on just a minute. I'm asking enter, please state your comments. I'm sorry, please go ahead, Austin.
Thank you, thank you, Lynn. Uh, thanks to Paul and Sean and the town's finance team. Again, that was as, as usual thorough and very, very helpful. Uh, I've a question about two downside risks. One is the question of sustained inflation over the course of this year, what it will do, how it will manifest in uh this year's budget and next, and the other is the catastrophic scenario of of a debt default at the federal level, and how, if at all, could that ripple down and affect town finances? Those are two happy questions.
So I can take that and Shannon or Sonya, if you want to jump in. So the debt default, I mean, if, if there is a debt default at the federal level, it, it ripples. We, we know that our debt, our bond rating is one of the major factors is the economic viability of the state of Massachusetts and of the country of the United States. It all flows together. When people are assessing debt uh and, and risk, they don't look at just one small town. That's a major folk, it's a big focus of it, but they also look at the broader state environment and the country environment, because there are people from all over the world buying debt. And so that's important. So if the feds have a problem, we have a problem. Um, for sustainability over inflation, you know, um, we um, that's something that's very real and, but we, we drive our budget development from our revenues. And our revenues are pretty straightforwardly uh brought in through property tax and from fees. We know where we are on that. So we have to absorb any kind of um inflation in, in, increase. And inflation can be included with, um, you know, collective bargaining increases as well. And that's the major driver of all of our budgets, school, library and the town. So if there are larger than uh, than we could have, than average um, uh, salary increases through collective bargaining, that impacts the budget most directly.
And the, the other area I'll mention real quick, where I think we'll see an impact um this year is on the capital. Um, the capital side, when we look at projects and what they call. The capital side, when we look at projects and what they cost, in particular vehicles, I know we're, we've seen prices of vehicles go up quite a bit. And figures that we thought were good, now maybe those estimates are lower than, than what the actual prices are coming in at. So I think in capital, we'll see maybe the funds we have don't go as far as they might've gone a couple of years ago.
Yep.
Peter Demling.
Yeah, thanks. So two quick comments. One, just a clarification from before Sean mentioned reimbursement for charter school tuition. And I think it's important for the public and for all elected officials to understand there is no reimbursement for charter school tuition. So the elementary schools pay estimated to pay next year about one point six million for charter school expenses could go up to two and a half million if we get more students, that, that would be about the nine percent cap. What, what can get reimbursed is the increase year to year. Right? And that's, and that's also underfunded. So that's less than a hundred K, which is not nothing. But it's important to understand that there is no reimbursement now or in the future for charter school tuition. And if you really want to change the game for Amherst finances and Amherst Public School finances, it would be reforming the charter school funding itself. There's a couple of good bills that we're trying to advocate on that Mindy Dom has been very helpful in trying to understand. And so I'm happy to follow up on that if anybody interested later. Yeah, just the other quick comment is it's a weird look to see three point seven percent for the town and two and a half percent for everybody else. I understand the addition of the program and this isn't a comment on the value of the program. But there's some really valuable, I would say, needed programs for our students that I would love to add three hundred thousand dollars to our operating budget for, and then have that be increased every year. So, you know, I think, I think you should, you should go back and take a look at, you know, is it, is it possible for you and your planning to fold that into the increases that everyone else is getting in, in the other departments or, or maybe you increase it to two point six, two point seven across the board. I just think that looks really odd when coming in from the financial picture that you described. Thanks.
Thank you. Alyssa Brewer.
So I'd just like a little clarity about where we are in the process and I appreciate what Andy described earlier. So the town webpage hasn't been updated to include FY twenty three yet. The budget calendar is not on the webpage yet. This material wasn't provided to us until moments before the meeting. So if the public was wondering why we don't have a lot of questions, it's because we've never heard the information before, because we didn't have it ahead of time to look at. So I appreciate that Andy was talking about the finance committee coming up, but tell us a little bit more about what the public can expect in terms of being able to follow this process since, you know, we're seeing it for the first time tonight. Will the calendar be available tomorrow? Should they be going to finance committee meetings? What should they be doing as this works? Because what Peter just brought up is associated with the conversations we used to have as a budget coordinating group. Why would one section of the town receive a higher percentage than another? And sometimes it's bridge funding to, for a particular set of funding, for a particular set of programs, et cetera. And so where are we going with that conversation? Because that's obviously non-standard to have a different percentage without having described a bridge program that's making that different this year that all parties have sort of agreed to.
Andy, how about I start or maybe on Paul and Andy, you might want to chip in. Tomorrow, the, as soon as we complete this meeting, we begin the budget process tomorrow, the finance committee meets. And we start discussing the budget guidelines for the council. We hope to adopt those in, by the end of this fiscal, by the end of this calendar year. And certainly the new council coming in on January third may decide that they want to take another look at them at some point in time. In addition to that, Paul began, we on tonight, we actually have our budget forum. This is when we invite the public to talk about items they would like to see in the budget or reinforce items they're already seeing in the budget. And that count, that conversation continues throughout the entire budget process. Andy, do you want to add anything else except for the fact that the town manager then presents a budget to the council? And by May first, although we deal with the regional school budget earlier than that, because we have to do that in conjunction with the other three towns that we are part of the regional schools. Andy or Paul?
Lynn, I'll just add to that, just a little bit more on dates so that people are aware of what, how the finance committee and council are proceeding and when meetings are going to actually occur. I think that got buried in a, in a chart that Sean presented. So I'll say a little bit more clearly. I think it's already been presented to the council, but not to the other boards and committees that are present today. It's noted, the finance committee has its first discussion tomorrow at two PM, in which time members of finance committee will have the opportunity to ask additional questions and then begin the discussion of the guidelines. With the, that will continue on the twenty third of December. So that we can present some draft guidelines to the council at its meeting on December sixth. At the December sixth meeting, the council may adopt guidelines that day, but they may also refer it back to the finance committee to consider comments offered at the December sixth meeting. The finance committee will therefore has scheduled a December seventh meeting, again at two PM. And the purpose of that is to do any revisions to the draft guidelines based upon comments received at the December sixth council meeting. And the hope is indicated that by Lynn is that at the December twenty council meeting, that the council will adopt guidelines to present to the town manager.
Paul, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
No.
Okay. Dorothy, you have your hand up.
Just a quick question and perhaps it's a stupid question. We received lots of money or in the process of receiving money from the state and the feds due to the whole COVID emergency. None of that has been used for any operating budget or any of the budget that we were shown. Is that correct?
Do you want to go?
Go ahead.
So we are proposing to use some ARPA funds for, for like the crest department, for example, we're proposing to use ARPA funds for one-time costs. So there's about two hundred and fifty thousand in there for that. There are some ARPA funds for the D E I, one of the D E I positions that will help phase that in. And then there's ARPA funds being proposed for the firefighters to help phase those in. So we are using ARPA funds to help phase in some of these, these additional costs over the coming years.
And that presentation is on the agenda tonight during our discussion. Alex LeFave.
Thanks. I think I heard and correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the bump that we had in reserves for this year is because we didn't use all of the money we thought we were going to use for the operating budget. Did I hear that correctly?
So it's, the bump in reserves this year is from a couple of things. It's partially from the operating budget, but also with revenues coming in better than expected.
Okay, so I'm just putting on my joint capital planning committee hat. And last year, obviously, as everybody on that committee recalls that we, we only, we, we wound up taking, we wound up taking less for capital needs so that it could be moved over to the operating budget because of the situation created by COVID. And so I just want to remind people as we move into this budget process that we have a lot of vehicles and other capital needs that we pushed out so that we could move that money to the operating budget. And I don't know what percentage went into reserves, but I'm thrilled to see we're going to be at ten percent, but I just, I don't, I don't want to be so excited by the ten percent that we forget that we're going to have a bigger, a bigger need on capital because of what we did last year. And so seeing that money go to reserves makes me hope that somehow maybe we'll be able to address those needs this year.
So you're, you're foreshadowing another agenda item later tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. Mindy Jo.
So a couple of questions. The first one deals with the library allocation. I don't know or don't remember where we are in the increase of the part-time workers salary to fifteen dollars an hour. So I'm curious whether we've hit that or if we're still working on that. And if we're still working on that, whether keeping them at two and a half percent is enough to be able to continue progress on that without squeezing other portions of that budget. And then reserves are quite high. You know, our goals are fifteen percent at the top and we're sitting at foreshadowing the financial indicator stuff twenty five percent. And so I know the current plan for the four capital projects intends to use some of those reserves, but I believe my memory was that even after the use of those reserves our dollar amount in reserves was not intended to go down. So what is the plan or has there been thought about using more of the reserves and bringing our reserves down a little closer to our goals to save borrowing costs or other things for capital projects that are coming up or relooking at that or even using some to help phase in more quickly additional employees in certain operating areas.
Yeah, so I can start, Paul, and you may want to jump in. So on the, the library minimum wage, I don't think we're there yet. That is something that we'll discuss during the, the ARPA presentation because that's one initiative that we're at least exploring for the second round of ARPA funds. And then for the free cash or for the reserves being high. So I think that's on, that's up for consideration when we get closer to these building projects and knowing the actual prices and things like that. I think the other thing is we are anticipating that if the gap that we just showed you on the projection, if that's not closed through state aid coming up higher or through other revenues coming in higher, that we may need to use reserves this year to support that transition. So we haven't ruled that out either for this year that we might get to use reserves as a one-time thing to help phase that program in.
And I just add in, that's a fundamental decision on the financial guidelines that the council will be developing is what do you want to do with the reserves? And previously we didn't want to use them, but they are at a state now where you could say, what's a strategic use of the reserves?
Okay. Alyssa.
I'm sorry, my B C G question wasn't addressed earlier, just following up on that. The assumption that we just on the town side automatically get the additional three hundred and the other areas do not. So what's going to be the continuing conversation for that? Is there going to be a B C G meeting? Is there going to be further discussion? This is just a decision that's been made. I'm, I'm asked for more information about that.
So this is a proposal and this is our, our take on the projection for next year. Again, this will revolve around the, the financial guidelines that the council wants to put forward. And, you know, having a broader discussion with our other partners is certainly doable.
I think we'll know, but we'll know more after the finance committee meets on, as to whether or not we will have an additional B C G meeting. Andy.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Sean maybe to supplement a little bit on what was said about ARPA funds in the answer to a prior question. And specifically in regard to sixth grade transition costs.
Yeah. So one of the things that is in, so one of the things that we're aware of is that there will be some additional transition costs, capital, and then some operating costs for the elementary schools as they move sixth grade to the middle school facility. So in the ARPA presentation that we will discuss tonight, that is still being proposed to use some ARPA funds to help with that transition. And we'll talk more about it later on, but there, that's still in the, the final proposal. I think it's about seven or eight hundred thousand dollars total to support that transition.
Okay. Thank you. Shalani.
Yeah. What was my question? Okay, yes. The drop in the school budget is a percentage of the total expenditure. I know Sean, you did say something briefly like why it's gone down over time. If you could explain that. And should I just say the second one too? They did that, you know, I know that every year the school budget expend goes up, but I also understand that the increase wasn't enough for level services budget. So can you explain that part as well?
So the drop, so all the operating departments dropped. If you look at that chart from FY thirteen to FY twenty two, the region, the library, the town, they all dropped a percentage point or so. The elementary schools dropped a little bit more. They dropped about three percentage points. If you look at that chart and at least part of the reason why their drop was bigger was a couple of accounting mechanisms that didn't really affect overall spending, but it took it out of their operating budget. So we used to include charter and choice tuition in the elementary school budgets back in FY thirteen. We don't do that anymore. And FY twenty two, we had a auditor tell us we needed to stop including that in the elementary school budget. So that we still have that cost, but it's just not in the elementary school budget anymore. So that would make their slice be a little bit smaller. The other thing that's changed since then is we started accepting school choice students. We may have done it right around FY thirteen. I can't remember the exact year. But we started accepting school choice students at the elementary schools that brought in additional revenue. And when you accept school choice, you set up a school choice fund and then there's, you move expenses into that fund. So there's expenses that would have been part of the school that were in the budget back in FY thirteen that are probably now in that school choice fund. And FY twenty two, so again, not the overall expenses didn't didn't change much. It's just where they're located changed, which I think is why that elementary school drop is bigger than the other, other budgets, other operating departments. And then the level services, so that's a constant struggle. I think all departments faces wages and benefits and retirement typically rise faster than the revenues that we have to support them. And so it's always, it always makes us every year sort of reevaluate the programs that we want to continue and prioritize the, the areas that we value most. Some towns probably have revenues that grow fast enough, but I think in Western Mass, that's a problem that many communities share.
Could I just get a clarification? I didn't understand the charter part or should I wait?
So the charter, so charter and choice tuition used to be in the, in the elementary school budget. So it would have been in that FY thirteen number. That's their pie slice. Whatever their tuition costs would have been in, in that budget. The way the town used to pay for charter and choice tuition is that the schools would put it in their budget one year and then it's a complicated reimbursement story that some people remember Sandy Poole are dancing around, but that's, the town would reimburse the schools the following year. And so the auditor said, no, we don't want you to do that and have this weird mechanism. The town will pay the charter and choice tuition directly. And the schools won't include it in their budget anymore. So it's, it just changed who was paying the charter and choice tuition. It used to be being paid by the schools and their budget, and it took it out and put it in a different part of the town budget.
Okay, so the town is paying for the charter. It's not the school that's absorbing.
It doesn't come out of the town, like the town hall budget. It comes out of just the overall budget. There's a, it comes out of a state assessments section.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Shane.
Yeah, I, I'll have an opportunity to talk about this more tomorrow because I'm on the finance committee. But I, if we start looking at reserves at all for transitions or as Alex suggested, some catch up on delayed capital expenses, I think we should be looking at two or three years so that we don't get into thinking that we can get by in one year worth of operating budget. And then we have a problem. So we get twenty twenty three looks fine, but then twenty twenty four doesn't look that much. So it's much, I, I can think of it much more as one-time expenses that we're, we're doing catch up on maintenance or we're doing other things. So it's just the comment on Mandy's saying, you know, reserves are high and we built them up, but being careful about how we think about moving that money in. And then my, my question is, I'm on the school building committee. And we will be needing to pay, in fact, we get to our final choice of designer tomorrow. But we will need to be paying a designer fee for the initial feasibility stage. Where is that in the budget? Do we have that already reserved? Is that part of, will we be pulling it out of reserves? I know we took a vote at one point. So, so it's just a question of where that money.
I believe we authorized debt for that. I think about seven hundred and fifty thousand was authorized. I think it was last year for the O P M and for the designer, for the feasibility study. So right now that, that's projected to be funded through debt.
So my, my question would be, So my my question would be, when we're having this bigger discussion, would we want to reconsider and finance it by pulling it out of reserves so that we don't take on bets? So it's a question, not a that I think we should do that, but just a question since we built up these reserves. And it's we're in this neighborhood, the nature of a one time expense, you know, to because you also, the 2023 does not have the debt service yet for the Jones Library, which will show up in 2024, you know, so we're going to have that pulling down when we actually go out for it. So it's just, I'd like to know more when we get into finance. I'm trying to think of what and how we look at the reserves we've accumulated because some of it is for the big capital projects and the school is one of them. So thanks.
Allison?
Yeah, I just want to restate a couple of folks have already said that we just saw this, received this tonight. So the reason why we don't have really deep and thoughtful questions is because we're just seeing this for the first time right now. So I don't really want to risk asking a question that simply because I haven't really had time to read and understand and maybe I've misunderstood some things. So I will digest it overnight, but I also want to state, I think several other folks have said this. It does feel, it does look awkward that the budget is increasing 3.7% and the schools and the library are only getting two and a half percent. And particularly when we see that health insurance is going up 5%. And that's a significant chunk of our budgets. And means that means that there's much less than two and a half percent that's available for everything else that, you know, to a great extent is not within our control. So again, I don't want to sort of say what the implications of that might be from a school's perspective, because I haven't had time to digest that. But I just sort of want to echo and support the comments that my others have made that it is awkward. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Then Lynn, can I quickly respond to that?
Please.
I'll just say it's not unheard of for one of the town departments to go up more than others that that has happened, I would say, a few times in the last 10 years. But I'll I concur with Alyssa, which is there's more conversation that needs to happen among all the all the committees and boards before anything is finalized. Again, we're, this is initial projection to kind of show what we're thinking for next year based on what we're aware of right now. But before anything moves close to being final, obviously, it needs a lot more discussion.
Alex?
Yeah, I just had one more clarification. On one of the charts, there were a couple of charts that had employees. And the speaker said that school employees weren't included in those charts. Our library, since library employees or town employees also, were library employees included in those charts?
That's a good question.
Yeah, and the reason I ask that question is, right, the town pays about 78% of our salary and benefit costs, the library has to make up the rest. So, you know, when we moved our employees to $15 an hour, you know, we paid for that. So if town's going to be paying for that now in later discussions, that's great, but.
So I I don't think library employees are included in that FT chart.
Okay, okay. So none of those charts.
We'll get a clarification for you on that, Alex.
Okay, and then I'm just going to once again state, because I know you guys have heard me say this before, I don't know who came up with the the library getting 78% of our our town employee costs covered, but that's always been an awkward thing for us and takes up a big part of our, you know, state aid and or endowment, which is always difficult for us in terms of we really like our funds to be about programming. So I'm just going to throw that back out there for the room at large as people are considering big pictures, our employees or town employees. And it would be great to have the town fully fund our employees. Put that plug out there, be quiet.
Okay, are there any other comments? Because we do have two other meetings tonight. Alex, do you still have your hand up? Okay, Pat?
A quick question. We you talked about in the presentation, the difficulties around and challenges around sustainable budgeting and a need to manage public health and public safety staffing. And I wonder what kind, and so staffing and the costs of that are very high. But how are you planning for that? Or is there a plan beginning to be built to really address that? And I think, you know, this may be a question for later, but I'm very concerned about the staffing challenges in a lot of the departments.
I'll start with that, Sean, you can jump in if you want. So staffing for both, we know that the health department is going to look different than it did prior to the pandemic because public health has taken. It was barely funded previously. I know we were going to have to dedicate more resources to it. Fortunately, we do have the ARPA funds to support that. We have been using CARES funds to support addition for additional firefighters. We'd like to continue that into the future as long as possible. We do have ARPA funds that can support those four additional positions. And then how they get integrated into our ongoing budgets is the is the sort of challenge that we have working on right now. Sean, I think you want to answer that?
No, I'll just add, oh, well, yes, I will add briefly that that the one silver lining of the pandemic is that our, you know, our operating budgets sort of flat out for a year. And we sort of realigned our values a little bit. And so we're seeing larger revenue growth than we might normally see in a given year. So if you look at our local receipts, they're growing at 16%. Our other financing sources are growing at a large rate. So our revenues are growing faster than they normally grow. Again, the challenges that our expenses are growing faster too than we were expecting a year and a half ago from this point. So that is the challenges to to look at our level services, especially once we get these collective bargaining agreements settled, to project out our level services for the next three years and how we can phase in these programs, portions of these programs each year using maybe reserves to buffer, using grant funds to buffer.
Thank you. Alyssa?
So quickly on process, we have a large number of people in the audience who I'm sure are very excited to talk at the forum next, but they're following this process along too. And part of this process is Saturday, even though it's not posted yet, we have a four towns meeting. And so normally in the olden days, pre pandemic, there was a handout on your way into that meeting that said, this is a working meeting, there is no public comment at this meeting. And that's something I think it's important for the public who's paying attention as well as the town council elect and the school committee elect to know that coming into that meeting. So when that meeting's posted, will it show that there is no public comment? Or is the intention to hold some public comment during that meeting? Because I just think we need to manage people's expectations appropriately.
I'm going to have to turn to the school superintendent or to the Allison.
I'm happy to answer, but I would just say that this tonight's meeting is not, we did not post tonight's meeting as a meeting of the regional school committee. So we can't really discuss regional school topics. But to answer the question, there is no public comment at the meeting on Saturday.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? And I just want to mention to the audience that we will have public comment during the public forum, but not during this phase of this meeting. Okay, seeing none, I am then going to move to ask the school committee, Allison, to adjourn.
The Amherst School Committee is now adjourned at 7:25 PM.
Okay, Chris Hoffman?
The Jones Library trustees meeting is now adjourned at 7:26 PM.
Andy, I know the finance committee will be joining us for the public forum, but you need to adjourn them now.
I adjourn this meeting of the finance committee and we will reconvene the finance committee for the purposes of the forum. And then we will adjourn for the evening after that.
Okay, and for the purposes of this meeting, the town council is adjourned at 7:27. We will reconvene immediately as we go into the public forum. I want to thank Sean and all of the people who had a part in preparing this presentation and providing us with the information this evening. So thank you and thanks for joining. We are going to move on to the public forum. It is November 15th. I need to mention that we are having this meeting by remote means pursuant to Charter 20 of the Acts of 2021, given that we have a quorum of the council present. The Amherst Town Council is now back in session at 7:28. And I'm going to call on you and please let me know that you can hear us and we can hear you. Shalene Ball Mill?
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer?
Present.
Pat DeAngelis?
Present.
Darcy Dumont?
Here.
Reese Murris, present. Johanne Akey?
Me and you, John.
Present.
Dorothy Bam?
Oh, here.
Evan Ross?
Present.
George Ryan?
Present.
Kathy Shane?
Here.
Steve Schreiber?
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg?
Present.
Sarah Schwartz?
Here.
And then I'm going to just mention there is no chat room and we'll follow the usual procedures if technical difficulties arise. Andy Steinberg, do you want to check to see if the other members of the finance committee are also present and can hear us and we can hear them?
Yes, so just between the meeting and Bob Pegg here.
Here.
Bernie Kubieck?
President.
Paula?
Present.
Okay, thank you. I just want to note there are presently 33 members in the audience. In addition to that, we are broadcasting by Amherst Media. And so I will ask at this point, we have a very, very brief conversation. Since 50% or more of the meeting needs to be devoted to public comment, we are going to start with town manager Buckelman and finance director Sean Manzano.
I think Sean's going to go straight into it. Very efficient. So this is a condensed version of the presentation that we just gave. So a lot of it is or all of it is repeated information. So tonight's takeaway is again, a couple of our major challenges are the economic impacts of COVID-19 and preparing for the four major capital projects. As noted earlier, some of our important accomplishments is the approval of an FY22 balanced budget and getting our bond written affirmed. And we can, the town continues to work from a solid financial base. This chart shows our revenue projections, very early revenue projections for FY23. We're projecting property tax revenues to rise three and a half percent. Local receipts to rise 16.2%. State aid to stay about flat. And other financing sources is dropping 10%, but that's because of some one time revenues in FY22. Otherwise, it would be, it would be growing a little bit. Total revenues we're projecting to increase about 2.9%. On the expense side, we're projecting two and a half percent increases for operating budgets plus an extra 300,000 for the town operating budget to help with the implementation of the CREST program. Capital, we're proposing it to be funded at 10% of the levy, which is in line with our plan for the four building projects. The miscellaneous section is going up 9% and that's due to a 7% increase projected for our retirement assessment and increasing OPEB back to pre pandemic levels. And our unappropriated uses is going up, must be a formula error because it's not going up 102%, but our unappropriated uses, the major cost increase there is in state assessments where we're projecting a 3% increase. And we'll get more information in January. The net shortfall at this moment is 685,000, but there are a number of variables that could improve, some that could get worse. But we will update this when we start to get more information on those variables. Some of the key charts that we discussed tonight, economic growth revenues. This is starting to drop off in 2020 and 2021, driven by a reduction in our meals tax and hotel motel. Again, we think 2021 is the floor and that we'll see 2022 start to go back up and 2023 even better. So it's negative trend right now, but we think we're at the bottom of this. Our operating expenditures per capita continues to be really low, 38% lower than the state average. And so this, this is a trend that continues for the past several years. On the debt service side, our debt service as a percentage of revenues is is low. It's at 2%. It's we've intentionally sort of reduced our debt service load as we prepare to take on the four building projects. We've been very selective with adding new debt. And so this is intentional. And even when we do add new debt for the four building projects, we think that will only move us into sort of the middle of this pack. We're not expecting it will put us at the top of this pack, which is where we want to be. In terms of FY22, current year highlights, a couple of highlights. We increased operating budgets 2.1%. We increased capital spending and we allocated, reallocated funding within the budget just to begin the creation of two new departments, diversity, equity and inclusion and the CREST program. And then we have a few ongoing challenges, most notably managing the the public health and public safety around COVID-19 and developing these two new programs for the coming year. On the big picture going forward, some of our major concerns are economic uncertainty, reducing the town's carbon footprint and maintaining fiscal discipline as we start to add all these or integrate these new initiatives that we've discussed tonight. On the strategy side, to do all this, we need to just continue to be conservative and manage our resources frugally and then plan out. And when we do use our reserves to do it strategically, to help us bridge transitions when we have these programs. And open for questions.
Yes, before we do that, I would like to mention, if you are listening, that if you go to the link for the town council meeting, which is the third of tonight's meetings, you can actually come into the meeting as an audience. We seem to be having some confusion about links tonight. And that was brought to my attention by Allison McDonald. So this is a time for public comment. I'd like people to raise their hand if they would like to make public comment. And based on the number, I will make a decision as to how long public comment will be. Waiting to see hands. So public comment is generally three minutes. And to the extent that you can make it less than that, that's terrific. Occasionally during public forums, we do have an opportunity to clarify information and we may take that opportunity if we can do so at the time. But generally, that's not how we do that. So I'm going to begin with, somebody is identified as LSA Amherst. Please enter the room, state your name, where you live and proceed.
Thank you. It is not LSA Amherst, it's Ash Hartwell. And I'm a member of the League of Women Voters Racial Justice Committee. And the remarks I make are a reflection of our consultations, but don't represent an official position of the league, just to be clear about that. First, we wanted to say as a, as a group, we felt it is extremely important to recognize that effectively addressing the issues of racial equity, inclusion and justice is really central to Amherst's well being. And town could really actually act as a, as an example to other communities, both in the state and even beyond, as a reflection of the values and the and the notion we have about what it means to be an inclusive community that is concerned with the well being of all. And more specifically, we we think that the existing efforts that arose out of the Community Safety Working Group and the Reparations Group are extremely important to recognize as just the beginning, but that they're important that they get started. but that they're important that they get started well. And this isn't something, it's not just a budgetary matter, it, it's a matter that has to do with the town's well-being. And we recognize that there is a matter of transition costs. You can't start something new by stopping the old to make money to do the new. You have to have the transition. That has been spoken of here, but it's important to recognize that to get things underway will probably take a period of two or three years where you're spending more money than you otherwise will once the program gets established. And that's true for all social change. I think, secondly, earlier reports we've made have suggested that the town takes seriously the idea of doing an actual strategic plan for addressing racial equity and justice that looks at the various initiatives as a totality rather than as separate parts. And that actually will bring them into harmony and create a greater unity. And this kind of planning is certainly as important as the planning that we do for capital development and for other areas where we do town planning. And, and the Government Alliance for Race and Equity, which the town is now a member of, gives lots of examples of how this can happen, but we think it's important. Speaking specifically now, we, we feel that the funding that is necessary to have a good start for the recommendations that have arisen out of the Community Safety Working Group are, are really important to, to give adequate attention to, and, and those have been spoken of in those presentations, but the new department for the D, the Diversity and Equity Initiative Director and the, and, and the CREST and the, the Resident Oversight Board, all will take a lot of attention in terms of implementation. We could say the recommendations were just the beginning. And, and these are going to take attention and, and they're going to take unity in, in, in in working together to bring them about as an effort to see that they contribute to the town's overall inclusion and well-being. And we just want to say that we think it's very important that the town make it a priority, make it a reflection of its values, that it adequately supports these efforts. Thank you.
Ash, thank you for joining us. Michelle Miller, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Miller, and I'm here as co-chair of the African Heritage Reparations Committee to communicate its financial requests as voted on in its meeting on November tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. We recognize that the town is in the early stages of developing the FY twenty-three budget. However, given the charge of the AHRA and its timeline for making recommendations to the Town Council, we've focused the bulk of our work to date on identifying ongoing funding streams to support the implementation of a robust and sustainable municipal reparations plan. The following requests are a reflection of what the AHRA has determined it will need to fully satisfy its charge and the town's commitment to engaging in a path of remedy for residents of African descent. The AAR, the AHRA requests future annual transfers to the Designated Reparation Stabilization Fund of twenty percent of the town's certified free cash. The AHRA understands that cannabis tax revenue has yet to be earmarked for a particular purpose and calls upon the Town Council through its budget policy guidelines to earmark a hundred percent of the cannabis tax revenue in support of the municipal reparations plan being developed. With respect to ARPA funds, we make the following requests, noting that we learned today after our deliberations that there are revisions to the original ARPA spending plan released in October. The AHRA requests six hundred K of the one point seven six million earmarked in the October spending plan for racial equity and health to fund reparation activities and projects through two thousand and twenty-six. The AHRA requests six hundred K of the seven hundred K earmarked in the October spending plan for recreation to fund youth and family-centered programming and to include planning for a cultural or youth empowerment center. The AHRA requests six million total across three rounds of ARPA funds earmarked for housing, for reparative home ownership assistance, for African heritage populations to contribute to amassing wealth, as well as the development and building of affordable homeownership units on town-owned land. The AHRA requests a hundred and seventy-five K from the CPA funds for FY two thousand and twenty-three to fund an open space or historical preservation project as one element of African heritage reparations in Amherst. There are many questions still left to answer with respect to types of reparations, who is eligible for reparations, and how reparations will be legally allocated. And over the next six months, with the participation of the Amherst community and anchor institutions, we will be thoroughly addressing each of these questions. We thank you for your time and attention and look forward to working together to think critically and creatively to advance reparations for residents of African descent in Amherst. Thank you.
Um, I'm actually going to go ahead and ask Dr. Jemison to come in. She is the co-chair of the Reparations Committee. Please state your name and where you live.
Hi, yes, hi, this is Jamila Jemison. I'm at seventeen Amherst in court, and as you mentioned, I'm the other co-chair. Thank you for hearing us both and hearing us back to back. Just wanted to give a brief statement to provide some context around the funding that we requested. Reparation for the harms done to African heritage individuals in Amherst is not an event. It's a process, a process which needs to be holistic and provide both address and redress to the multiple facets of a black person's life and legacy which are impacted by this nation's long history of structural racial inequities. The funds the AHRA has requested provide opportunities for the town of Amherst to boldly commit to this process in the budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three. Free cash and cannabis tax revenue would support a goal to grow a target fund into the millions to support reparation activities far into the future. A project supported by Community Preservation Act funds would honor and elevate the black history of Amherst and show locals and visitors how it interweaves with our more well-known history. And then one of the superpowers of reparations, it is, is that it is a chance to disrupt the status quo, to step away from this idea of, I'm sorry for what happened, here is one, like discreet remedy, let's move on, into, here's a plan, so this doesn't happen anymore, and money to execute that plan. The ARPA requests are to activate the reparation superpowers. A commitment to the work of reparations being funded beyond the term of this committee would allow us to deliver on all of these great ideas, creating a space and programming for youth that will see, celebrate, and nurture their black identity in the context of our community will mean that we are raising future generations in a more positive and equitable atmosphere. And the ambitious proposal to address housing inequity and the economic devastation of centuries of barriers put up against homeownership by black Americans starts to repair economic and community harms that have done before. The time to start repairing generations of broken promises that have been compounded in this country is always now. By putting these items into the town's fiscal year twenty-three budget and working with us on our execution, Amherst is making that start now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to go to, onto Marisol Pierce Bonifas. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Marisol Pierce Bonifas, and I live on Harris Street in District One. I speak today as a leader in Sunrise Amherst, a local hub of the Sunrise Movement that worked tirelessly this town election year for increasingly progressive and diverse representation. I am very excited to see the progress we have made and to hold past and new councillors to promises they made to Sunrise Amherst and their constituents. I was an activist when determining the FY two thousand and twenty-two budget, and Sunrise Amherst launched a campaign to prevent the detrimental one million dollar budget cut to our public schools on inadequate CREST funding. We cannot allow similar budget cuts to occur this fiscal year as well. As a student at Amherst Regional High School, my education and everyday life attending high school is crucial for my mental health and well-being. My school, my teachers, and my classmates are raising me to be the person I am today. If we are to undergo another budget cut to our education, crucial services and programs that benefit so many students' lives would be damaged, and our interest in school will lessen. It would also be highly unnecessary to go through a budget cut when the Amherst Police Department budget is an inflated five point one five million dollars, and police officers obtain salaries six percent higher than teachers and one hundred and forty-four percent higher than paraprofessionals. We must prioritize young people's education in this town, as Amherst schools, staff, teachers, parents, and students are ensuring that the future generation, my generation, our generation, is stronger than ever before. Not only does school funding need to be protected, but alternatives to policing as laid out by the Community Safety Working Group must be fully funded. To ensure safety for all Amherst residents and to reflect our changing nation, fully funding CREST or the Community Responders for Equity, Safety, and Service, and the recommendations set forth by the final Community Safety Working Group report would install new hope in our town government. In the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget, I urge you to fully fund CREST, other CSWG-proposed initiatives, strong climate justice measures, affordable housing plans and programs, and our ARPS public schools. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Zoe Defund, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, everyone. My name is Zoe Crabtree, and I live in District Five. And I did not prepare the type of written remarks that you may have come to expect from me. And I don't have all the numbers that you have heard from me before. I am here tonight simply with, with one message, which is that you should listen to the recommendations that the CSWG has brought forward to you, that you requested them to bring forward to you, and that it is your responsibility to carry forward into action. One of the things that I think is important that we reiterate in all of the times when we talk about the CSWG recommendations is that they need to be, the implementation of them needs to be led by BIPOC folks, and that the, the spirit of the recommendations is not respected if that is not true. So I hope that that spirit makes it into the budget guidelines for the next budget, and thank you all very much.
Zoe, thank you for joining us. Embrata, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Amrit Tivrider, and I'm speaking on behalf of Sunrise Amherst. I live in District Two and attend AHS. Sunrise Amherst is appointed by the priorities represented in the FY twenty-two budget and is excited for the opportunity to push our Town Council in the FY twenty-three budget. After the previous cuts to the school budget, we hope that you will prioritize school funding. A very large portion of Amherst residents attend school, and we attend it for a very large portion of our lives. It is where we learn to be humans and to contribute to this world. Our generation is being passed down a world in a fragile state. It is important that we are educated to the fullest extent that we can be. I ask that you remember my peers and I when the Town Council is deciding the FY twenty-three budget. I would also like to see the CREST program fully funded. Racial equity should be one of the top priorities in this town if we truly want to call ourselves progressive. The CREST program would benefit the entire Amherst community long-term and reduce a great deal of harm to people of color in our town. I also believe we must keep climate change present in every decision that we make this year. We have reached a terrifying and critical place where we must do everything we can in every second that we have. In every decision you make about the budget this year, I want you to ask yourself if you're prioritizing youth, racial equity, and climate change. This is your chance to prove to us young people that you truly see us and the terrifying tangle of issues that we're facing. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Allegra, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi, my name's Allegra Clark. I live in District Two. I just wanted to echo the voices of our wonderful youth activists that we have in town who are speaking on behalf of our future generations and hope that the FY twenty-three budget does not include any more cuts to the schools. I also want to commend the hard work of the CSWG and strongly urge that all of their recommendations are fully funded, not just the CREST program, but the DEI Department and their proposed youth and BIPOC Cultural Center. From what I've seen, there are at least funds that are being worked out for CREST and funds being allocated to DEI. It looks like there's a possibility that some RP money will be used for the Youth Empowerment Center, but I haven't seen anything about the BIPOC Cultural Center, and I hope that that recommendation isn't getting dismissed. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. Julian Hines, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hi there.
Hi, Julian.
My name is Julian Hines, as you guys probably know, and I am a resident of, is currently District Four. I come to you today as both leader of Amherst Sunrise, a local hub of the Sunrise Movement that has worked endless hours this election season for progressive and diverse representation on our Town Council. I appreciate the work of the Town Manager and the Finance Department staff for presenting us with this budget today. As anticipated, with the COVID- nineteen pandemic, this budget cycle was difficult to create as compared to past years. I understand that FY two thousand and twenty-three will not be a perfect budget year for our town, but I believe that we should follow guiding principles to assist us. With a new progressive and increasingly diverse Town Council entering, I see that residents' priorities and voices have been reflected by who they have elected. With respect to the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget, but also more broadly, that means that it's current councillor's jobs to slow down and understand the public's priorities, rather than cram through their own agenda in the next few months before a new councillor is sworn in. I understand that we will not be able to fund everything as we would like to, but we must instead choose our priorities. Those priorities should be our residents' priorities. As you have heard from myself, Sunrise Amherst, and countless other community members, we must preserve our school funding after already sustained over one million dollars in budget cuts last year. I do not believe it is all necessary to cut our school budgets again this year, when there is plentiful funding from other sources. I'll note that the Police Department was able to fund a brand-new cruiser to replace one that is already ten years newer than some of our school buses, ladder trucks, and snowplows. I know that the capital requests are different from operating budgets, obviously, but we must send the message that children like myself deserve a high-quality education. After all, many families, including my own, have moved here for our schools, not our Police Department. The message must be sent that our town cares about our children, our schools, and our infrastructure. Equitable public safety services like CREST must also be brought into the consideration. I join my fellow resident Sunrise and Sunrise Amherst in asking, while you create the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget, you prioritize basic services like education and find full funding for the CREST program. As CREST is supplementing some of the Police's work, I understand why funds may be needed from that department. Thank you.
Julian, thanks for joining us. Irv, please enter the room, state your full name and where you live.
My name is Irv Rhodes, and I'm at one seventy-three Pondview Drive, and I really thank you. I would like for at least thirty seconds of my remarks to be not counted towards my total, since I want to praise the presentation that was made by the Finance Department with Sean and Paul and the other people. I, I really admire their efforts. I think that they are, they're doing a tremendous job in relationship to education, so I want to applaud them for what they have accomplished. Second, I, I think I also want to reiterate what these fine young people have just said in terms of the school budget. As you all know, I'm going to be incoming, incoming school committee member. I would like for the, the docking of the school budget in relationship to the charter programs, et cetera, to stop. If all departments are getting three percent increase, then this school should get three percent increase, with no deductions whatsoever. Secondly, in terms of Secondly, in terms of ARPA funding that was mentioned by the AHRA, which I am a committee member of, there was a request for about $6 million for housing, affordable home ownership housing. What has been one of the most glaring deficits in this town over the last 20 years is that we have increased housing, affordable housing for rental housing, but we've had no pathway, none, for affordable home ownership. What we have done is created this permanent underclass. By design or not, that's what it is. We have created this permanent underclass, given them no way out, no pathway for creating equity. This must cease. The town can fund this program in and of itself, not only with ARPA funds, but with its own resources. The other comment is just a question. It would be really helpful if the council and others answer in terms of what I saw on the screen, in terms of the funding proposals put forth by Sean, which ones of these funding proposals is for one fiscal year or for multiple fiscal years? And that is really important. For instance, there's a $250,000 item for, yeah, for Economic Empowerment Officer. $250,000, is that for one year? And I want to sum it up this way. Please do not fund with ARPA funds. Those things that are in two or three years are going to come due for the budget for this town where the town knows that it will not be able to afford. And thus, it will continue the same pattern of, that have happened for minorities and other programs, you know, last hired, first fired. We do not need that to happen. And I urge you to look back at all these budget proposals for ARPA and look at them in the eye of sustainability beyond three to four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Irv. And Irv, you were referring to the ARPA presentation that will be coming up in the regular town council meeting. Nick Chiricos, I am apologizing for misspent stating your name. Please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Lynn, first off, you did a fantastic job of pronouncing my last name, so thank you. It's a tough one. I'll let you have that. My name is Nick. I'm speaking to all of you as a representative from the Amherst Firefighters Local 1764. I urge all of you to start making public safety a top priority for this coming fiscal budget. The fire department continues to struggle on a regular, daily basis. Our staffing continues to remain dangerously low. We frequently rely on neighboring communities such as Northampton and Beltratown to send their ambulances into our community to pick up the shortfalls of our staffing. We overutilize these resources, and the other communities are now paying the price as well where they continue to wait for ambulances for a town for a budget that they cover on their own. Multiple staffing studies have been performed over the last couple of decades, all of which have indicated that the staffing of the fire department needs to increase. This is a known issue within this town, and it continues to be ignored fiscal year after fiscal year after fiscal year. Your residents and your firefighters deserve better. We cannot allow this to continue to be an issue as your firefighters are continuing to pay the price with their behavioral and mental health. We are facing a significant crisis where our firefighters are burning out at an alarming rate, seeking employment elsewhere because they continue to not get support that they need from the town itself. We have worked tirelessly through this pandemic. We are appreciative of all of the services and efforts that the town council and the town manager have put into this, but we need additional staffing. We cannot continue to perform our job at the level that we need to and that the residents deserve with the funding that we currently have. We need additional firefighters. It has to happen now. Just to clarify, there is some discussion about the four additional firefighters that were done with ARPA money and CARES money. Excuse me. Those are not four additional firefighters. Those four firefighters were only there to maintain the 45 firefighters that are currently on the roster. There is no additional firefighters. Those are just added to help us stay afloat and tread water. We need to reach past 45 firefighters. So please, if any of you have any more questions, we are happy to meet with any and all of you. And that includes for any residents that are listening, we'd like to talk with all of you if you would like to speak with us about why this is important for everyone's well-being. Thank you for your time, guys. Enjoy the rest of your night.
Nick, thank you for joining us. Levy Gibson, please enter the room, state your name and where you live. Go ahead, please.
My name is Levi Gibson.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, you can hear me. Awesome.
Yes.
Hello, my name is Levi Gibson, and I am a resident of District Three. I come today as a member of Sunrise Amherst and a concerned AHS student. I'm concerned about the funding of public schools and the green infrastructure in Amherst. The FY 22 budget cut has caused us tremendous damage to public schools, both to the physical infrastructure and the quality of education we are receiving. I do not wish or expect to see further budget cuts to our schools in the FY 23 budget cycle. As a student interested in computer science, I'm concerned that further cuts to our schools, particularly in elective courses, will damage student interest in school and student mental health. I respect and understand that this year will be a difficult budget year for the town, but I believe we must also preserve climate resilient and green infrastructure funding in the FY 23 budget. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Levi. Lydia, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, can you all hear me?
We can.
Great. My name is Lydia Irons. I live in District Three. And I just feel like it's important to reiterate the urgency that I'm hearing from all of the other citizens tonight that have come to this budget meeting to speak with you all. I hear people asking for full funding for CREST. Students in Sunrise have come, and they are asking for the school budget to not be cut. There's reparations, affordable housing, the fire department, green infrastructure. And I just want to ask you all, our elected officials, do you hear the urgency in everyone's voice? How we're all asking you to resize and rewrite this budget that you can do for this town? And I think that it's important to point out that you can find that money by defunding APD. Our police department has more money than they need and should use. I heard someone talk about the new cruiser that was bought. We have come to these meetings and talked about freezing police positions and taking that money and putting it into these other things that our town needs so desperately. And so, at the risk of repeating what other people have said in much more eloquent ways, I just would like to remind you all that our budget does have space and money in it that we don't need to be spending on policing, that we can be spending for all these other things. And that needs to happen now, not later, not 10 years down the road. There's urgency. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Lydia. Isolda Ortega Bustamante, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Isolda Bustamante, District Five, Amherst resident. Good evening. Thank you. Because we have such eloquent people from CREST, DEFUN, Sunrise, and reparations, and I support everything that they have stated so far, I wanted to bring up something a little different, which is coming out of the view of your slides on what is ARPA. Just the very second slide, I'm looking at the major eligible uses that you've discussed. And I know there's been a lot of work put into this, and I appreciate that. So this is more of a request of your own research into the following questions. Looking at how education is the most direct impact on health, long-term health, wellness, and future prospects of any group that's been studied, looking at how each of these bullet points in here interfaces with education, but also looking at how each of these bullet points has room for access for the very specific population of underrepresented immigrants, children of immigrants, and specifically monolingual Spanish speakers. So beginning with support public health expenditures, I would argue that in particular behavioral healthcare and certain public health and safety is an example of that. So we are hearing from the schools, and I'm sure that the superintendent and school committee would work this out with you if offered. But increasingly, and I would say, the reason I'm calling in is because it's become sort of a daily basis of hearing from teachers and families about the increased social emotional needs coming into the pandemic, from students suffering from PTSD and the stress of being home in the middle of whatever family issues are going on, and the schools being pulled in every direction, doing the best they can. But in terms of behavioral healthcare, there is a way to expend some of these funds into either social workers or clinical licensed social workers, clinicians, maybe three at the cost of, you know, $60,000, $65,000 a year for the emergency situation that is being faced in which these clinicians, social workers, could float to the different schools and intervene to support staff because without that stability, it's very difficult to spend time on learning and to create the environment that everyone needs. In addition, under that certain public health and safety phrase, thinking about the longstanding need for additional bilingual, bicultural staff who are able to directly support the very few people working in town with this population on health, vaccine hesitancy, many of the issues that are still going on. And I, you know, I understand and see the hard work that's going on by all of your staff, but obviously, more support is needed. So I would say for public health, economy, and many of these bullets contain something about education. And this is not in any way not to take away from the other issues being brought up, but there is just a dire mental health emergency in many households that's being played out in the schools. And it really needs additional support that may not be in the existing budget that could be supplemented by ARPA. Thank you for considering that.
Well, thank you for joining us. Alicia Walker, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Hello, my name is Alicia Walker. I am a resident living in District Five. I wanted to respond to some of the discussion that happened during the last council meeting in regards to the CSWG recommendations. I have a few suggestions in regards to the budget process, as well as some concerns I wanted to bring forward tonight. I first wanted to start off by thanking you all and for inviting me to be a part of last week's meeting, although the CSWG is no longer a town committee. But because we were not actively engaged, I just wanted to briefly highlight one thing that I felt is often overlooked when discussing the CSWG recommendations. The CSWG had a charge that specifically asked us to look at alternative options to public safety services that are currently provided by the APD. Among our recommendations of establishing a fully-funded youth empowerment center and BIPOC cultural center, which I highly encourage you all consider in planning for the town budget, we also recommended the creation of the CREST department, which will serve as an alternative to nonviolent police calls or calls that would have previously been responded to by police. I am currently still a member of the CREST Implementation Team, which meets weekly, and was recently provided with the Town Manager's Reorganizational Plan in regards to the CREST department, as well as the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. It all looks great, however, it caught my attention that the resources list only contains two allocations: the DPH grant of $450,000, which was applied for by the Implementation Team under the lead of Mary Beth, and $250,000 in ARPA funds. And so I find it necessary to emphasize the importance of establishing long-term funding that is stable and does not rely on grant funding and is budgeted for directly through the town budget. This is how we will look to ensure the success and longevity of the department, and it is a way that the town can actively demonstrate their commitment to dismantling white supremacy. In implementation meetings, the team is told that the way we will be able to make a case for more funding directly from the town budget in the future is to demonstrate it so that while the department is running, if we find that we need more responders, that is how we can demonstrate our need. And we can then present that to the town council, asking for more funding. The problem with this approach is that other departments, such as the fire department, have demonstrated a need for more staffing and more funding for many years, and those needs remain unmet. And so we cannot trust that this is an efficient approach, as it has not worked in the past. And I wanted to circle back to setting departments up for success and note that the DEI director position salary is being advertised at an inappropriate rate in comparison to the job description and expectations that we have for this employee. Not only does this present another example of how we underfund and undervalue initiatives that directly impact equity and anti-racism, but we are also limiting ourselves in regards to what our applicant pool can be and what we can actually achieve in this town. And so we can't continue to do the same things and expect different results. And I hope you all will take a new approach with this budget cycle. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. Brianna Owen, please enter the room and state your name and where you live.
Hello, everyone. My name is Brianna Owen, and I live in District One. I am coming here today to, one, thank you guys for the continued conversation to keep the CSWG's recommendations in motion. The police reforms recommended can happen now without budgetary restrictions, and I hope they continue to move forward to ensure safety of all residents. A commitment to rewriting policies that reflect racial equity is the bare minimum for moving our community forward. I am also here tonight to emphasize how critical stipends are for the Resident Oversight Board and Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. At a prior town council meeting last month with myself, Ms. Walker, and Ms. Pat, we all engaged in a conversation about stipends and how stipends can encourage community engagement and address barriers to participating in decision-making in this town. Representative Mindy Dom notified Ms. Walker and I, letting us know that she had submitted an amendment to the ARPA funds. Amendment 1024 would allow Amherst to have $80,000 for Translation, Civic Engagement, and Participation Fund for the town of Amherst. I hope we do not lose sight of the conversation around stipends, and this means working this into the budget. The CSWG recommended $3,000 per member of each board, and I still want to urge you all to consider an additional fund beyond the $3,000 to help with expenses such as childcare, food, and other related expenses to the work. I also look forward to seeing the $130,000 from the two frozen police positions to contribute to the CREST program budget. Thank you.
Brianna, thank you for joining us tonight. That concludes our public forum, and so I'm going to adjourn this meeting at 8:16. And I'm going to ask that the council take a break, and we will be back at 8:25. Please mute and turn your camera off. Oh, I'm sorry. Andy, please go ahead.
Yeah, so the finance committee is adjourned.
Thank you. So unmute, I mean mute, and also turn your picture off when you come back. Turn it back on. Thank you. All right, I'm going to get started. This is the regular town council meeting on November 15th. It's being held pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, which allows us to conduct the meeting via remote means. Given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm calling this meeting to order at 8:28. I'll call upon each councillor to make sure that you can hear us and we can hear you. Shalini Baumel.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Present.
Pat DeAngelis.
Present.
Darcy Demont.
Here.
Lynn Griesmer is present. Mandy Johanneke.
Present.
Dorothy Pam.
Present.
Evan Ross.
Present.
George Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
Here.
Steve Schreiber.
Here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Sarah Schwartz.
Present.
Thank you. Please let us know if you have any technical difficulties. There have been some this evening. Very quickly, we can show the announcements. Athena. We have a regular town council meeting next week, however, at five o'clock, we start with a reading session. And for those of you in the public who are not used to this, basically you can turn the video on, but you're basically just gonna see the council reading the town manager's evaluations of each of the other councillors. At seven o'clock, we have a public forum on appropriations outside the annual FY twenty-two budget. And at seven fifteen, we will begin our regular meeting. Other than that, other things are posted on the agenda and on the town calendar. We're going to move on to our hearing. And this is a redo of the hearing, and I'm going to call on Principal Assessor Kim Yu and Finance Director Sean Mondano. They will provide a brief explanation of why we're doing this a second time and state the proposed rates, and then I will officially, and with that, however, I will officially open the hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to let you know that the reason we're having to redo this is because before our classification hearing can be had, we had to submit our LA thirteen, which is our new growth, and our LA four, which is our values, to the DOR for approval. Once they approve those two forms, we have permissions to be able to hold our classification hearing. I think with just the changing movements of the office, it was just a mistake made. So with that being said, we're here again tonight to do the hearing. It's all the same documentation that was provided in the packet in the previous hearing. And with that being said, the board would recommend that we stick with a single tax rate of factor of one. That we do not recommend the small commercial or residential exemption. Sean, do you have anything that you wanted to add?
No, that's, yeah, this is basically just a procedural vote to, to make sure that this happens after the, the Department of Local Services approves our classifications.
Thank you. So this is the hearing, the actual votes are on the consent agenda. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, I'm going to go to the audience and ask, are there any residents who would like to speak in favor of the rates that we are setting or in opposition? Seeing none, seeing no other hands of the public who wish to make a comment, I am closing the hearing. We're now going to move on to general public comment. This is the only public comment this evening. And we've already just had a very robust public comment period regarding the budget. Are there any people who would like to make general public comment? Seeing none, I'm going to go on to the next agenda item. The next agenda item is the consent agenda. Athena, would you please place the consent agenda on the screen? The following items were selected because they were considered to be important and routine. And it was reasonable to expect they would pass with no controversy. To remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion later in the meeting, ask that it be removed when I request such from the council. The request to remove an item does not require a second. So the motion is as follows. Hold on one second. I just need to get to that. To move the following items and the printed motions thereunder and approve those items as a single unit. The first is just to suspend so that we can vote tonight. It's the suspension of Town Council Rules of Procedure eight point four for the following agenda items, and they are all use of the public way. Eight point C point one, Public Information and Emergency Communication Signs, otherwise known as the SUFA signs. Eight C three, Extension of Back-in Parking Spaces on North Pleasant Street. And the other one that was on there that is no longer on there is the landfill, that one that's actually dealt with back in July. Six A, Waiver of Town Council Rules of Procedure eight point six for the proclamation to support Small Business Saturday and Merry Days. And then the actual proclamation is the adoption of the proclamation in support of Small Business Saturday and Merry Days. Eight A one, acknowledging the council's vote on October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as invalid to adopt a minimum residential factor of one equal tax rate for all classes of properties for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, and that no open space discount be granted. Eight A three, acknowledging the council's vote on October eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one as invalid to not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. Eight C one, Approval of the Use of the Public Way for SUFA Public Information Emergency Communication Signs. Eight C two, Approval of the Use of Public Way, Embracing Community Art Euro Project on the East Common. And eight C three, Suspension of Town Council Policy Regarding the Control and Regulation of the Public Way Section. Two C, Approval of Extension of Back-in Parking Spaces at thirty-seven to fifty-one North Pleasant Street. Eight D, Approval of Landfill Solar Project, excuse me, strike that one. And the last one is nine B one, Designation of Town Council Representatives for the November twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-one for Towns Meeting. I see one hand, and that would be Dorothy.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the SUFA signs. I was going to just pass it, but you know, I've received some resident comment that they don't really see the point of them and they're cluttering, and I had actually felt that way all along.
So I'm, given that, I'm going to just ask that we remove that from this agenda. Thank you. Darcy?
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, but I'm just wondering, it doesn't need to, do both need to be removed then?
No, the only, the only one, I'm going to, I'm going to ask and continue, if you don't mind, that we suspend the rules of procedure so we can vote tonight, but that we actually then leave, we leave that on the agenda, on the motion, but we take off of the motion the item eight C one, Approval of Use of Public Way, SUFA Public Information and Emergency Communication Signs.
Yeah, I would just ask to also take off eight C one, because I think I probably heard from the same person that Dorothy.
That is what.
We've already agreed to do that. Thank you, please. We've, I am removing eight C one from the consent agenda. I am leaving suspension of eight point four on the consent agenda. Darcy?
I'm asking to take that off.
No, eight point four means we can vote tonight if we want to. Eight point C point one means we, it would have given us immediate approval. Instead, we will have a discussion. And if we proceed, we can still vote tonight. You don't have to remove eight point four. All eight point four says that when we get to that item, we can vote tonight.
Right, I'm asking that we not, because the person that spoke with me said that she didn't, she wanted to have more time to be able to have the council discuss it twice. So that, because she just heard about it and she wanted to be able to come back and speak to the council.
Fine. Then we are removing eight C one under suspension of rules of procedure. As well as the vote. So anything regarding the SUFA signs is no longer on the consent agenda. Mandy Cho?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that under the suspension of eight point four, we're not voting to suspend eight point four for section eight D because that's not on our agenda anymore. And so I just want, what's on the screen to show that?
Thank you very much. I agree with that. And it also, we're taking out it very down below eight D. Alyssa?
Just to clarify, we're not taking the SUFA signs off the agenda. When we get to that agenda item, we'll talk about it because it was no longer in consent to pass it. We will also discuss whether or not at that time, we want to suspend Rule eight point four because the majority of the council may choose to do that, whether or not somebody pulled it off consent, but it's still an option for later tonight.
That is correct. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Thank you. Are there any further questions or discussion? Okay, so the consent agenda is the one, as you see it on the screen, with the various strike throughs. I'm going to begin with Alyssa Brewer.
Hi.
Pat DeAngelis.
Hi.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmer is an I. Mandy Jo Hanneke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Hi.
George Ryan.
Hi.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Hi.
Andy Steinberg.
Hi.
Sarah Schwartz.
Hi.
Shalini Balmil.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the actual resolution that we just passed. It's stated now therefore, the Amherst Town Council proclaims November twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-one Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community to support Amherst-wide small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Please note that in addition, the Amherst bid in the chamber are, are also designating December third and four as Merry Days. These are in relationship to the Merry Maple Celebration. And they will be, there would be complimentary Amherst area gift card holiday promotions during that time. We're going on to presentations and discussions. Paul and Sean, the American Rescue Plan Act update.
Thank you. So I think Sean's gonna do that one. Yeah, I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, so this is the refined version of the plan that we proposed to you back in October. Quickly, I wanted to highlight again sort of our overarching philosophy for all the grant allocations. We wanted them to align with town council priorities and as much as possible, and in particular, town council goals. Any programs funded through the grant would be developed with lenses of equity and sustainability. We understand the importance of transition planning for any of the allocations that are intended to be ongoing. And we heard public comment about that earlier, and we'll talk about some of the, some of the allocations that we, we view as ongoing, some of the ones that we don't view as ongoing. Funds need to be centered in communities and areas of the economy hit hardest by COVID nineteen. That's a sort of a core principle of the grant. Many of the, the funds that our programs were proposing address longstanding challenges, challenges that have been made worse by COVID nineteen. And critical to all of this is monitoring all the grant allocations with reporting that we can put, we can post online and share with the council and track success for these programs from the beginning. Because some of these programs, we may want to continue after the grant is gone, and unless we know how successful they are, we won't know where to, the best ones to invest in. Engagement, so we're in this final third of this. We did the listening sessions. We heard from somewhere between, I think, five to ten people from the listening sessions, we engaged Amherst, I think we had somewhere around twenty comments, maybe a little bit more. So we've, we've heard from a moderate number of people about the, the proposed spending plan and other ideas, and that's all still posted online under the Engage Amherst page. So if anybody wants to see the, the comments or the feedback, it's all there still. Some of the themes of, that we've heard from people, I would say would be increased funding for economic development, funding for firing EMS staffing, premium pay, food insecurity support, housing and homelessness, youth empowerment reparations and support for artists and cultural organizations. So some of the highlights of the revisions. So we have added an Economic Empowerment Officer. This position we view as temporary, not permanent. And it would focus on expanding opportunities for entrepreneurs, artists, cultural organizations, and then also economic partnerships with the university and colleges. So this, based on the public comment earlier, this is proposed to be a three-year, two to three-year position, depending on when it can be filled. So it is not permanent, anticipated to be temporary to help us as we come out of the pandemic. And that the funds that you'll see proposed for this are over two and a half years or so. Premium pay, so this requires a lot of work around the rules and who would be eligible. But one of the, sort of the fundamental uses that was identified in the ARPA Grant Program was additional compensation for staff who were at risk and came to work each day throughout the pandemic to keep the community running. And so there is a proposal for funding for that. Increased funding for resident emergency aid and support. So we've worked with the Survival Center a little bit to see what it would take to continue the delivery service program. We've heard that there's been, that program has been successful and allowing people who may not have accessed the Survival Center to get access to it. And that that's a critical program for the next couple of years. We've, I know there was a comment about the additional staffing. So these, in terms of, from a budget perspective, these are for additional staff. I know sometimes people go on leave or there's vacancies or things like that. But in terms of the number of positions that are budgeted, these would be four additional positions that are budgeted. It may not feel like that in terms of the day-to-day, but it is for additional positions. And so we've also modified this proposal to go through FY twenty-four, and we've changed our thought process or realigned our thought process that this would be a permanent addition that we would phase into the operating budget in FY twenty-five. Public health, a couple items were reduced because we got the public health grant. Mental health programming was reduced a little bit because we have additional funding from this other grant, and same thing with the Transitional Support Coordinator. The Ambassador Program allocation was tweaked a little bit. It's, we're now thinking this program would go beyond just downtown. It would still support downtown during busy times, and then if there's any peaks with COVID. But we're also viewing this now as more of an extension of our community participation officers and reaching out into underrepresented communities and having ambassadors beyond just downtown out in the community. And then the Youth Empowerment Center, so our Recreation Department has a new director, and, and so one of the things that we wanted to do here is to consider whether a youth empowerment center could be created in-house before we go out and do a request for proposals. The original allocation was just go straight to a request for proposals to see if there are any groups out there that want to do this. What we're adjusting this to be is that there's some time for our Recreation Department under new leadership to consider whether they could create this space and this environment in town. And so that will probably be two or three months to explore that and do an analysis. It may come out that we still go out and do a request for proposals, or we may come back with a plan to do this program in-house. So this chart shows the categories of spending, a more detailed description. So this chart shows the categories of spending, a more detailed description what was proposed back on ten four, the changes to that in gray. And then the final is in the the maroon, well, not final, but the the final draft we're presenting tonight is in maroon. So I know there was again a question about fiscal years. We didn't. We put it in the first presentation, but we didn't put it in this presentation. So I'll try to note quickly how many years some of these things are over. So it it's really an estimate at this point in terms of how many years. It depends on when we develop these programs and some of these things, what types of proposals we get from the community. But the preschool was anticipated to be over four fiscal years. This first one, three hundred thousand to expand preschool affordability and childcare slots. This expand preschool and after school care. Um, I believe was just one year. The uh the downtown improvements under economic revitalization, we just reallocated a hundred thousand. So um three hundred thousand would go to the bid for downtown improvements. And then we've broken out specifically a hundred thousand for small business startup grants. So that wasn't really a change, more of just breaking it out separately. The Economic Empowerment Officers, I mentioned, that would be over two and a half years. The downtown boat bathroom that hasn't changed. Some of, there are some items that we took out that were in the original proposal. So there were a bunch of things that were under FY twenty two budget needs that we took out to try to um get a little bit more out of the grant. Some of these, we don't, these things, these are things we're still doing, but we think we can do it out of the FY twenty two budget. Um, and then case of the capital projects manager, um, we're just not ready. The projects are not ready yet for that position to start. So we were able to take out a year of that. Other things that have changed, uh, the premium pay, you'll see that has gone in for four hundred thousand. This would be for town staff. Again, the rules would be around being required to come to work. Um, and there's lots of rules in the ARPA grant about what level of, like, what level salary can be eligible for this. So this would require quite a bit of time to develop the the rules of this program if if we go forward with this. Uh, you'll see under the mental health programming again, that two hundred fifty thousand was reduced because we have funding in the DPH grant for that now. We've added two hundred fifty thousand to the EMS staffing to fund that fourth year or the or the FY twenty four fiscal year, that additional year from the grant. We have reduced the transitional support coordinator because of the DPH grant. And you'll see we've increased the transportation services for the Survival Center and the senior center is also included in that. But the increase is driven by the Survival Center funding. And that would maintain that delivery service program through FY twenty four. The revenue replacement number, we've aligned with what we've actually used. So we've only been able to use it for sewer and transportation so far, not for water. So we've adjusted that down to what we actually were able to use. It still may be something we want to come back to out of the remaining grant funds at some point. But for right now, we wanted to refine it to what um the actual number is. We reduced uh the two hundred thousand for standing municipal fiber a little bit. So that would just mean we wouldn't be able to extend it as to as many locations. And so the total is we've added about two hundred twenty six thousand to the initial plan um to fund the new programs that described. So this is again round one. We're looking for your feedback to finalize and begin to move forward. All these are really high level allocations. Um, and all them will, many of them will require staff to develop rules and procedures for other programs will work if we're doing a a request for proposals. We have to put together those documents and and what the town's looking for. So and this is very early and very high level. There's still a lot of work to be done on each of these before they can go into effect. We anticipate that there will be a second round of grant allocations. It could be really anytime, but we're thinking maybe a year from now for the remaining grant funds. Um, and that could either be to continue, expand upon anything that's working really well, or it could be for new ideas that have come up in the meantime. Some of the ideas that we have heard or we're considering, so as I mentioned earlier, I think a question from Counselor Hanneke was about the the fifteen hour minimum wage for employees at the library. So one of the ideas we're considering for these additional funds is accelerating that. So we do have a, I think it's a two or three year plan to get there. One option would be to use these funds to get there faster. And we'd still phase into the operating budget the same way we are now, but it would get, be able to get um staff up to that level immediately. And then contributions to the Reparation Stabilization Fund. So um this was early before we've received some additional guidance from our auditors. So we're being discouraged from making any contributions to a stabilization fund. Because there are some rules around, you have to use the grant for expenses and not build up rainy day funds and things like that. So we're not sure that one's eligible, but I think the larger question about using ARPA funds for reparations is still an open question going forward. In terms of transition planning, so these are really the four um major expenses up above that we anticipate will exist, will continue on. So the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, we're already planning that that will be folded into the operating budget for FY twenty three. And that's a halftime position that needs to be folded in because half is already within the operating budget. The translation services, um, we would fold in FY twenty four. We still have to see what those costs, because that'll be a newer program. But that would be something that would be folded in FY twenty four. The additional for staff for firing EMS would be folded in FY twenty five. And then the sixth grade to the middle school operating costs that were mentioned earlier. This would fund it through FY twenty six. We anticipate um, once the new elementary school project is done, at least based on what we've discussed in the past, that there would be some operational savings from going from three buildings down to two. And that those operational savings could then help offset the increased cost of having sixth grade at the middle school. So these are the four costs that we envision would continue. Everything else, the intent was either for it to be self sustaining by the end of the grants, um, grant term, or it was anticipated to be just for the life of the grant. And welcome your questions.
Thank you. Thanks, Sean and Paul. Uh, Pat?
Yes, I I'm a little confused and I could use a clarification on the firefighter staffing. We're talking about four temporary positions? Or are we talking about actually establishing four full time positions now through FY twenty five?
So the, so the plan, so they started out as temporary during cares. But the plan now is to move towards a more permanent um for those four positions.
Okay, and so only one of those positions is filled right now. So you're looking for people to fill the other three slots. Is that accurate?
I'm not sure what the vacancy situation is.
Yeah, so there there are vacancies and there are anticipated vacancies. So there'd be recruitment for these as full time. We'd be able to advertise for full time positions for firefighter paramedics.
Thank you very much.
Kathy?
I have a a few questions on different parts. For the uh the school part, the sixth grade to to the middle school, I had initially thought that money was for some of the um painting, getting the classrooms ready, so sort of a capital rather than staffing cost, Sean. So you seem in the remarks you just did to have it be something else. So I was just curious on what what that is. I I'm I'm not questioning the need for it. I'm just trying to understand what it is.
No, it it's both. You're correct. It's so the um, there is a one time upfront capital cost for exactly what you were talking about, painting and probably some new signage and things like that. And then there's an annual cost for, I think it's three years, might be because they pushed it back a year. So I think it's maybe two to three years now. I'll have to double check. But for the operating, the additional operating portion of having um that sixth grade at the middle school um in terms of the rent, there might be a rent cost for using the space and and utilizing regional staff.
Okay, so then my my second question um is if I add up the money for the major projects, the grant coordinator and the economic development opportunity, I get up to seven hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So it's a, if I, if I just sum them up. And it it's, it it's not quite clear to me what each of those will be doing that's different from the others is the first question. And the second is, um, for each of these, would we put in place some kind of metric? So uh, if we had a grants coordinator, did that grants coordinator succeed in bringing in more grants than we were getting without a grants coordinator? If we had a small business opportunity development, did anything come out of that? So, you know, so I'm just trying to see, because it could otherwise be, I can imagine a person coming in or three people coming in. But um, at the end of a year and a half, we'd say, well, you know, it's just really hard to do some of this. Which I would agree. Um, so so it's sort of, it seems like a big chunk of money on that.
So the, um, just to clarify, so that grant coordinator position is to manage this grant. It's to manage the ARPA grant and all and all of the programs that we would fund with it. So um, doing the grant reporting, if we do, if we allocate funds for expansion of preschool slots or for mental health programming, it's to work with all the different entities that would be recipient of the grant. And to and to do all the reporting and and benchmarking and things that I mentioned earlier. We do envision that this position could help with other grants as well and and be supportive of departments when they apply for their grants. But its primary role will be helping manage this grant over the next three to five years, depending on the programs and how long they last.
That makes, that makes total sense to me because you're going to have a lot of other things to do, I think, in the coming year. Although we seem to be able to ask you to do a lot. So I I do have a question on the other, but I don't need to take more, you know, just on metrics to know whether it worked. So the premium pay, um, I I saw in in ARPA, we just got the legal memo on things we can use it from. Would we try to, or could we try to target this to the lower end of the salary scale? You know, people who had to come to work that weren't already well paid. And um, and the reason I ask that is that our our town employees, even though they had to come to work, they didn't lose their job. We were really a good place to be working. And we have a lot of people in town that lost everything or, you know, so thinking that, you know, you still had a job. But so, so just thinking in terms of targeting that to um the lower end of our salary. You know, people, people were answering the phones, people who were maintenance people. And so can we do that with that money?
I think so. I mean, I think the way the grant says is that you should target sort of low to moderate income levels with the premium pay. So I think that would be part of the, again, the the rules that we write are the eligibility criteria for this program.
So I think that would be a good thing. So it didn't, people didn't think it was for what relatively well paid people who didn't lose their job and may have even gotten overtime pay, you know, so just trying to think of that. Then, yeah, I just have one more and then then I'll just, one more. On the housing part, I'm looking, I'll take more global. I've seen the CPA proposals on some of these also, and there seems to be some overlap. So it would this be if CPA didn't fund it, ARPA would fund it? Or is this in addition to the CPA requests on trails, on housing? There are a few of these, and then I'll stop. But I had, you know, and I'll stop asking questions. And I have one other idea and I can um send it in later, but it's it's a different topic, so.
So they're they're separate requests. I think it, they could, they could certainly both be approved. We know housing is a high priority, so they are separate requests. They're, they may, if they are both approved, they may be used in conjunction to maybe leverage off each other. But they're not contingent upon each other.
So my last one, Lynn, is not on the list. It's, um, I just became aware because a farmer up in North Amherst told me that their water meter had not been actually read for five years. So they always had an estimated bill and they paid it faithfully for each of those five years. It was finally read and they got a six thousand dollar bill because it turned out the the estimates weren't right. So I, could we, if we said more than a year went by without it being read and we do a forgiveness program which repays that but brings them back to um being whole? And I don't know how many people this happened to, but five years seem, and they had, they had all the bills in front of me of paid bills going back five years. And I confirmed it. So it just seemed like, and so at the low end, getting an unexpected surprise bill of that amount seems like something we're doing to our residents that we shouldn't need to do. And if we could do a replacement so the water fund doesn't lose money with it, I think we would get a lot of goodwill. So I I just don't not, I have no idea of putting a number on it because I don't know how many people got hit with five years of estimated bills.
Hopefully not many. The one, um, the one thing that is in the plan that I don't know if it would help with that or not, but we do still have an allocation for the Resident Emergency Fund. It's really targeted towards people who are impacted from uh by COVID and any emergency expenses they may experience. But that is still in the in the plan.
And I thought of this as a, yeah, policy piece, rather than having people have to beg for it. So I'll, I'll stop, Lynn, but it's a long list of questions on this.
Thank you. Mandy Cho?
Thank you. I'm gonna stick with three questions, one of which was answered, but I I just want another confirmed clarification. Right now in the budget, there are forty seven FTEs for the fire department. And so by um the fiscal year that this would go into the operating budget, that means the FTE staffing line of the fire department would increase to fifty one. I just want to confirm that. Childcare was not on your list of continuings or transition planning, which means are we really going to fund an expanded childcare slot for four years and then just drop it? And are we really going to fund expanded preschool and after school care and then just drop it? And so I, because it wasn't on the transition planning. And then I want to go back to the sixth grade at the middle school. I actually oppose using ARPA funds for this. I asked this last time and I didn't get an answer. And that is, it is my understanding that the school, the elementary school gets its own ARPA like funds and that they have millions for their ARPA like funds. And so I am still not understanding why we are using town ARPA funds to fund capital and operating expenses at the elementary school when they got their own ARPA funds. And so I would like confirmation that they got their own, I believe it's a couple million, and why they can't fund these costs within the funds they got. And then, um, yeah, so so those are basically my three questions right now.
Yeah, so I can start with those. So um, so yes, on the firefighter question, these four that are funded from ARPA are not currently in the budget. And when we phase those in, it would be an increase of four. So yes to that. The childcare allocation, so that that allocation really from the beginning, the intent is that we would do a request for proposals and get submissions from either existing preschool providers or people considering it on how they could expand their numbers or expand classrooms with funds, with startup funds or transition funds. But by the end of the grant cycle, they would be self sustaining. So that was, that's used to sort of seed money to help people grow and expand and have a more permanent. And then come up, and one of the things we require is part of those submissions is how they would have a sustainable model after two or three years that we could review to decide whether we concur that this proposal has um the ability to be sustaining into the future. The intent is not to be a sort of a short term bridge there. It's to try to spur creation of childcare slots in town. And then the last uh question, so I did talk with the schools a little bit more. So they they've allocated roughly half of their, I think they got about one point five million um from from the ARPA program for the elementary schools. And so they've allocated about half of that, but what they've said to me is they still have two more years after this that they're thinking about. And so one of the public comments that we heard earlier about mental health at the schools in particular, that's one of their major focuses of their funds. So that I know that they're addressing major health um with their existing, they call it S R three, even though it kind of came through ARPA, but it's called S R three for them. That's one of their major focal points for this coming year with S R funds, but also they're not sure how long those mental health needs are going to last. So again, we're proposing to use this for um what is sort of a non-programmatic, you know, sort of the capital and the structural changes related to the elementary building projects. And they're focusing their funds as much as they can on the programmatic side. Again, mental health being a higher priority.
Could I follow up?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so with the sixth grade move from the to to the middle school that has been voted to be delayed a year, why wouldn't we put this potentially into phase two to see if the schools, if they've only why wouldn't we put this potentially into phase two to see if the schools, if they've only allocated half of theirs, are able to allocate some of their money to this so that we can use part of this to do town stuff? Like it seems premature to be allocating this if the schools haven't already allocated everything and aren't sure they're going to need to allocate it to mental health and could be allocating it to this.
Yeah, no, that's a, I think that's certainly, we can do that. I think we, I think the one thing that might come sooner is the capital piece. In terms of the painting and the getting the building ready, but in terms of the operating piece, now that that's not until F, been pushed back a year, in terms of the funds being spent, it won't be spent as early as we thought.
Okay, Mandy Jo, you're completed at this point. Okay, Dorothy?
I want to follow up on the mental health services through the schools. And I guess I would like more information because I'm hoping it won't just be mental health friendly units in the classroom or some experts who might be called in for a child here or there, but I'm hoping that it would mean actual counseling, real counseling offered free to children who need it. Because I believe this is a major, major result of the school shutdown and of COVID. There are many students who are now having mental health problems in elementary school, in middle school. And certainly my students at Holyoke Community College, they all wrote in their first essay on their mental health problem, their anxiety attacks. And I've never seen anything like this in my life. So what kind of mental health program is it? Is it really going to give counseling? Because of people I know, parents are spending the money out of their pocket. Many parents cannot afford to pay for counselors, but many students need their own independent individual counseling, one hour a week or 45 minutes a week. Is that in the plans at all? Thank you.
Yeah, so I can, I can connect with Doug and Mike and get something sent out to the council about their plan. So I, I believe it's actual additional counseling staff, but I can't confirm that. I'd rather them do that. So we can have something sent out to the council, hopefully tomorrow, that gives you their plan or their, their first draft of their plan for spending their ARPA funds.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
George?
Thanks Lynn. Two questions, if I may. The first has to do with the economic empowerment officer. That looks like a multi-year position. Is that correct?
Yeah, so it depends how, how soon we can hire it, but it was somewhere between two to three years that we were expecting that position to last.
And it would live in town hall or could possibly be elsewhere in town? What do we know yet, what the parameters might be?
I don't think we know that. The previous position that is similar in scope, but not exactly the same, was in the town manager's office. But I don't think that's been decided yet.
Okay. And the second had to do with housing. The two largest, you know, ticket, you know, financial items, money items are in the housing category, both at a million dollars each. The first I wanted to ask about had to do with the affordable housing stock, a million dollars. Could that be targeted? Or is it imagined to be targeted for homeownership? Or is that yet still to be determined? We've already heard this evening during public comment, the issue or the importance of homeownership. Could that be targeted in that area? Or do we know yet?
So we don't know yet. We have been working with the Affordable Housing Trust. They have a number of ideas. From just buying land to expand affordable housing stock to energy retrofit programs for, for people who miss, meet certain income affordability requirements. To, there's two or three other programs that they're exploring. So what we, our plan is to work with the Affordable Housing Trust and others to, to come up with the best way to allocate those funds.
Okay. And finally, with the homelessness, a million dollars is a very large sum. Not that it couldn't be put to good use. I guess my question is whether this is again, something that is, is aimed at finding a permanent solution to the shelter issue. And that's an explanation for the size of that amount.
Yeah, so I think that it's sort of two prongs. That's one. The other idea that's being explored is a transitional housing type investment to, to help bridge that gap from the shelter to getting back on their feet. So I think those are the two pieces that are being explored for that, that allocation of funding.
And so perhaps less programs and more literal physical space, or again, is it?
Potentially, yeah. Yeah. I think it, what I've heard so far is yeah, more physical infrastructure as opposed to programs.
So, yeah, so I'll jump in here. So the goal in this is, they've had three locations in three years. Hopefully we'll get the University Motor Lodge for a few, for a while, but trying to have a, a permanent location that they can utilize. And we've actually had conversations with the state as well, and they're very supportive of this idea. So they're not going from church basement to church basement.
Thank you. Shalene?
Yeah, I also want to follow up on that permanent shelter. Just to clarify, is that going to be a year-round shelter? And I have two other additional questions.
So they would, Craig Storrs would like it to be a year-round shelter. We haven't gotten to that level of detail. We're looking at locate, we're looking more, looking at a location that we can, that we can use.
Okay.
Go ahead, Shalene.
Okay, so the other question is about the youth. I'm sorry, I'm in a room with my parents and a dog. So there's going to be a lot of sounds in the background. Apologize. Okay, so. Okay, the youth empowerment center. Can we include the youth leadership in that and, and making sure that community engagement is a part of that process? Because there are many pockets of needs that get left out and they're not here in our meetings. So just making sure that we are part of that RFP or whether it's done in-house, that there's actually a systematic process of including people from the community and also including our youth in designing that and meeting their needs. That's one thing. And if they're using the recreational director to lead that initiative, is he going to be compensated for that? That's one question. And then the DEI coordinator, is that separate from the DEI director position? Because thirty thousand does seem really low and I heard that was just half of it. But if you could just clarify what that's going to look like, because yeah, as we heard, we do want to attract someone who's able to take on our, you know, systemic thinking approach and includes is a very big charge here. And so we really want to attract a very good person to do that. Yeah, okay, I'll stay there. I'll stop there.
Yeah, so there, so there's two DEI positions. The DEI director position is already in the operating budget, not filled. And I think that's the position that was discussed during public comment. The other DEI position is already, already exists and is partially funded in the operating budget. And this is just half. So yeah, the, what you see in the ARPA grant is just half of that position for this year. And then it'll be folded into the operating budget next year. Your prior question about the youth empower, I think in terms of all the engagement thoughts that you had, I think absolutely. I don't know if the recreation director would be compensated extra. You know, we sort of reviewing this as part of the scope of, of that department's mission of providing youth programming. So I think that would, that still need discussion. Was there any other questions or did that cover it?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
Shalene?
Yeah, just the last thing was, again, I, the firefighters, I know it's been answered, but just to clarify again, the four positions that were, is, we're gonna, that's too. So what we heard in the public comment was that that was just, it's not adding more positions. So what I heard Sean say is that we are going to add more. So this is just a replacement of the existing staff, but we are going to add more positions.
I feel like there's disbelief that we're actually adding these positions. That's what I'm hearing from the, from the council. No, so this is, so again, these are, when these positions were originally hired, it was sort of in the, the, during COVID, when the COVID was at its peak and it was using CARES funds to help with the potential spike that was coming. And then these positions were temporary when they were first hired. They went away for a little bit when the, when COVID went down. Then we brought them back when COVID came back. And so they've been funded with CARES for a while and now we're transitioning them to ARPA. But again, the, the plan is to make them permanent and integrate them into the budget in FY25. And it'll be for more than they currently have budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Okay, seeing, yes, Alyssa.
Could you tell us a little bit more about why the, we have the two different grant coordinators here? And this has been so long, it took a while. Three, three, seven, five for a grant program manager, which is this grant. And then when we're looking at a, an only two to three-year economic empowerment officer, that's 250. So again, just kind of looking at what we, what we heard about earlier tonight in terms of sufficient pay for the new DEI director position. Also, sufficient pay is an issue for this. And evidently, we think we have sufficient pay for the grants coordinator for the ARPA fund. So are we just looking at, we're going to hire an economic empowerment officer that we're calling something different now? And just say, this is a two-year job. What, what's the plan here?
Yeah, so the grant program manager, we have over a longer term. So I know it's more money, but we have that going over four and a half years, the life of all the potential grant programs that would need to be reported on. So again, that we're thinking that's like a sixty-five, seventy thousand dollar a year position where the economic empowerment officers would be a higher level. So, so that's why that, that number is different. Again, for economic empowerment, it could be up to three years. We have additional funds for round two. So again, if that's a, if that position is filled and is doing really well and it's and it's doing what we want it to do, it's, but the person we want them to do, we could extend it. However, there, I'm still a little uncertain about whether we can fund people after a certain point, which would be December 31st of 2024. That's when we're supposed to have all our obligations sort of set at that point. Then we could potentially spend money over the next two years. But I'm not sure what that means for people. If we have people on staff and we know exactly what they're going to make, can we continue to fund them? Or do we have to sort of cut off people at that point? Still an open question I have.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh.
I'm sorry, Alyssa?
I just need to follow up. So, and maybe Sean was already going to do this at the end of the presentation. But we've not done this the same way some other communities have done. I'm not saying we've done it wrong because there are a million different ways to do this, but people have had much larger engagement efforts than we've had. We, I mean, we tried, we just didn't get, we got a moderate amount, as was pointed out. And, and that's fine because there are so many restrictions on the way these funds are used that I realized that just huge brainstorming is not necessarily helpful. But just in terms of the public understanding, there's been a lot of confusion in the public as to, well, is the town council spending this money? Is the town manager spending this money? And it's my understanding is the town manager is just spending this money. So what's our role here? What do you want to hear from us at the next point? You know, what are, what are the next stages of this? Because I get how we got to this point, but I'm unclear as to how we move on beyond this.
Yeah, that's a great question. So I think in terms of the public engagement, we didn't do the broad engagement. We considered it, but working with finance committee, we sort of steered back to, towards this process. That, that being said, the finance, finance committee did discuss round two, there being the possibility of a more open process with a specific set of money. If we get to that point of saying, here's, we, we don't have a plan for this fifty thousand, do people have ideas for it? So that's not, definitely not going to happen. It's just, that would be part of round two. I agree with you. My understanding is this town manager, the town council has accepted the grant. It's now the town manager's job to allocate the grant. I think what we're looking for tonight is, and we've heard a little bit of this. You know, this is what we've, we have based on our assessment of needs, working with key stakeholders and getting feedback from the public. We've heard a little bit about some programs that people don't like. I guess that's what we want to hear. If there's things that are definite, don't do them. It's not that we definitely won't do them, but I think that's what we want to hear. If there are specific programs that people don't like, we want to hear that now. Or if there's things that you don't see here that are really high priorities, I think we want to know that too. Because I think after tonight, then we're going to move forward and finalize a plan and start executing it.
Dorothy?
Did we get an answer to Mandy Jo's question about funding for preschool and whether it was permanent?
So a little bit. So the, the funding for the public and expanding preschool slots, again, the intent there was to spur the creation of private preschools and maybe public preschools, but to generate more classrooms and more slots. The schools also requested sort of a temporary increase in, in their preschool capacity related to COVID and there being a backlog of students who needed access to early child, to early childhood education. And so they've requested a one-year in funding for that. And then beyond that, they would have to fund it from their, from their S R funds.
Okay, I realize, remember that now. Can I follow up? That answer left me very unsatisfied because self-supporting means that parents all pay for their kids preschool. And I know many parents can't afford to pay for their kids preschool. So are there grant programs like Head Start? Is there, is there public money that would pay for these kids to have preschool if there were in fact places for them to go to preschool?
So I believe there is, there are subsidies. I don't know how easily accessible they are, how much they help. That is one of those types of things when we were talking about this transitional support coordinator position and knowing all the benefits that are available in town. That was one of the things that we envisioned that position being able to help families and residents with. But I don't have much of a better answer for, than that.
Okay, Darcy?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. You said, Sean, that you're going to be sometime in the near future finalizing what the first round is going to go for. And I'm just wondering, time-wise, whether you can leave that five hundred thousand for sustainability kind of open? Or do you, I, I know that you had said you were going to work with ECAC to try to prioritize what that was going to be spent for. Do you need to know that before you finalize or how?
No, I mean, I think the, one of the reasons why we want to finalize is because some of these are going to take probably two or three months of work to figure out what we're going to spend them on, the specific programs that we're going to spend them on, sustainability being one of them. So that's one of the reasons why we want to move forward or begin to move forward is so that we can go and start really saying, here's what we have and what programs are we going to consider and weigh their benefits and costs? Because there's, I've heard lots of ideas for the sustainability money. All of them good, but we, we do have to kind of narrow it down to what we can do with that money.
So we have some time to do that.
Yeah, again, finalizing the plan doesn't mean we're going to spend it all. I think finalizing the plan means we can say, you know, in the case of sustainability, we can work with Dave and Stephanie to say, this is the allocation for sustainability. Go work with these ACAC about how do we allocate these funds.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I did, the reason I did not make any comments is because I basically echo some of the things that have been said, including my reservations about the money for the middles, for the sixth graders and also the early childhood. So I don't need to say anything more. With that, we're going to go on to the next agenda item. We are now on to action items. And we're on to the financial orders. Action item B.
We actually have one more vote for the tax classification.
We did that in.
We did two of them in consent. There was a third one that didn't, that wasn't unanimous last time we voted it. So we didn't put it in consent. It's the second one.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to go back to it. Thank you. So the third motion for the tax classification is the following. Acknowledging the council's vote on October 18th, 2021 was invalid to not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2022.
I'm sorry, I'm one, Lynn.
It's not the one.
It's the residential exemption.
All right, would you please read the motion?
Acknowledging the council's vote on October 18th, 2021 was invalid to not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year 2022.
Okay, I so moved. Is there a second?
Panicky seconds.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion or question? Seeing none, I'm going to go to Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Griesmerz, an aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalani Bellmelm.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
This time it is unanimous. Okay, now we'll move on. Financial orders. Uh, this is Sean, Sonia and Paul. And I'm going to turn it over to you.
Paul, do you want me to describe this one? So in FY twenty-one, we had a larger than usual, um, surplus, right? As you've seen the fourth quarter report, um, our revenues came in higher than expected. Uh, we had some savings on the expense side and meant that much of this was related to, um, was COVID. It was the biggest driver of all those, uh, both of those, um, uh, events. And so the transfer that we normally would, we make each year where we transfer the excess above five percent in free cash, we transfer that excess to stabilization. The transfer would be quite large and it would put us up at that twenty-seven percent number for reserves, that you saw during the financial indicators presentation. So one of the reasons, and this was mentioned earlier, um, during the financial indicators report, one of, for FY twenty-one, um, the two areas that were reduced the most in that budget were capital and OPEB. And those were reduced in order to preserve the operating budgets and to limit any reductions to operating budgets. So we're proposing, um, allocating a portion of what we'd normally transfer to our stabilization fund, allocating a portion for some capital projects, um, and for OPEB. And then also for something we discussed earlier in the year. So I'll just go through what those are. So we're proposing allocating a million dollars for roads. Um, we know roads have been identified as a high priority. And it's one of the things when these four building projects come on that we're not going to spend as much on and that there's a, you know, a large backlog for road projects. So that's one proposal, um, two hundred and fifty thousand for sidewalks or of all the same stuff as roads. Four hundred and fifty thousand to OPEB, the, the OPEB trust fund. That's roughly the amount, or it is the amount that we reduced the OPEB allocation the last two years, um, from five hundred thousand. We cut it down to two fifty and then to three hundred. So that would restore what we reduced those two years. Two hundred and ten thousand to the reparation stabilization fund, which is what we discussed when we created the stabilization fund. That later in the year, when we did the free cash transfer, we would transfer an amount, um, equivalent to what we receive in cannabis revenues. And so that, that, that would be this one. Um, and then the last one is, was sort of, it wasn't unanticipated, which was the dog park. Experienced some unforeseen events when they were, uh, beginning to construct it and it's required additional funds in order to complete it by the spring. Um, and so the final thing here is an additional request of seventy-five thousand dollars, um, for dog park capital expenditures in order to finalize that project. The rest of the free cash transfer would be about two point six million and that would be more in line with prior years. And that would still go into our stabilization fund. And it would put us around two and a, um, around twenty-five percent instead of twenty-seven percent. So we wanted to bring these to you and, um, and get your reaction to it.
And before we begin that discussion, let, let me just mention, this is an automatic referral to the finance committee and will be on their agenda tomorrow at two o'clock. So this is the opportunity for, uh, counselors to share their thoughts with finance committee members. I'm going to start with Dorothy.
Uh, just for the benefit of those people, uh, listening in, uh, when I read the detail as to why the dog park fee went up, I think they should know it had to do with the cover on the landfill. Because at first it sounded, you know, frivolous and kind of ridiculous. What? Seventy-five thousand more for a dog park? But it's a structural problem with the place that where, that we had set aside to do it. So it seems to be, so I'm saying, I think it's reasonable, but I think people would like to know what it was for. That's all.
Thank you. Mandy Jo.
Yeah, um, I want to comment on the, um, road and sidewalk allocation because that's where I see us attempting to make up the lower FY twenty-two, um, capital allocation that was only eight and a half percent this year that we were hoping to be at ten percent. That difference would have been eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty, given the math I just did. Um, and this, this extra is one point two million plus. Yet it wouldn't have gone to roads and sidewalks if we had allocated the full ten percent in capital this year to, um, to the FY twenty-two capital improvement plan. Because the roads and sidewalks already had, road cash capital was eight hundred and fifty this year. Um, sidewalk cash capital was two hundred this year. That's already, that's over and above chapter ninety funds. And so the fact that it's going, we're putting even more there when we've pushed off capital projects for now two years to the fact that our ambulance, we needed to borrow an ambulance from North Hampton, that, um, we have no plan for purchasing a ladder truck, that it's on the, um, pending project list with a hope that there's going to be other sources of funding. That our pending list, um, includes a comfort station at Kiwanis Park without any funding. And crocker repairs to roof and windows or further on. Other vehicle lists, you know, we've put off so much in the last two years and then we're not going to use any of this money that really could have been allocated into the FY, um, twenty-one budget that we didn't. And even the FY twenty-two budget that we didn't, and we're just going to put it into roads and sidewalks, doesn't seem right to me when our other capital needs have been pushed off for so long to the point that we've had to do already one extra capital, fun, funding for, um, EMS equipment, um, that we pushed off. And now we had to do a mid-year funding for that. And so great, it's off of next year's, um, capital on, on the FY twenty-three capital plan. But I think we should be looking at what we pushed off and starting to fund some of them because some of our departments have faced real hardships because of what we put off. And this doesn't show any recognition of those hardships at all.
Paul.
Sure. So, um, the back, the need for road and sidewalk work has been stated over and over. And so this was an attempt to, um, uh, recognize that that there is a significant need and it was a one-time infusion of cash could help that. Um, I totally get, um, what you're saying, Randy Jo, is to go back to, to the capital program and why not tick some things off of there? And that makes perfect sense. And that's also an option that we can follow if that's where the council would like to go on this. The, um, you know, I, I think what we're experiencing in terms of vehicles, um, is that there's just a really long delay on getting, ordering vehicles and getting them in, in place, just like everybody else is doing. So looking at where we could put this money to work as quickly as possible, was the logic behind doing, you know, addressing some of the things that, um, I felt could really address the, a common need throughout the town.
Paul, I just have to ask a question. Do we have to allocate funds for a vehicle before you can order it?
We can't sign a contract to purchase a vehicle until there's funds set aside.
So it's a chicken and an egg. If we don't, if we don't have the funds, then we can't order it.
Right. But we, but even, you know, like, we do have an ambulance that's, I think it's been delivered or it's about to be delivered any, any day now. But even with other vehicles that we've ordered, it's just a very long wait, wait time to get it delivered.
Shalani.
My question, I'll, uh, okay, then, sorry. Okay, so I'm trying to understand where do we have this conversation about priorities? I think Alyssa sort of alluded to that earlier and because, okay, here's the thing. The dog park capital expenditure, I get it that it's essential now. But, and, and it's already, we've already committed to it and we, you know, we're going to go ahead with it. But really, when we think about future priorities, the way we're investing, the capital expenditures we're making, it's like we're taking on this expenditure and we know there's going to be additional stuff and maintenance and whatnot. And seventy-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. And, you know, we're struggling to house homeless people and, and there are all these so many other issues. I mean, I don't have to go over those, but it's just as a, I just feel what I'm trying to say is that uneven streets that, you know, we heard Mandy Jo's point, it's okay, we're investing in streets and pavements. But then also the question is with streets and pavements? And, you know, we're, there are a lot of streets where in South Amherst that are ignored and what? And so how are these decisions being made and what are our priorities? And that's what I'm still struggling after three years is where is the space where we as a council come together and say, what are our priorities? Because it seems like we're all coming in with our own pet projects and interests, but we've never had a conversation together about this is, let's all be behind this and we all together are committed to this and let's make it happen. So where, where does that happen?
Well, typically that would happen through the JCPC process. And then there was be a recommendation to the manager. This is an unusual situation in that it seems to make sense since we have additional reserves that we did not allocate in prior years that we could allocate now. And, um, so it's really, it's in this room here that the council would say, yes, we want to do this project or not. So it really is about what you, it's, it requires an order from the council to expend this, these funds.
Shalani.
Yeah, I'm still not clear. You're saying the JCPC is where the council should come together and talk about priorities as a town? Or is it the budget guidelines?
Budget guidelines are generally about the operating budget, although capital certainly does get mentioned. At the same time, JCPC is the smaller capital projects. And that's the joint committee of the school committee, the library and our representatives from the town council. And that's where they talk about the capital priorities, uh, which they then bring to the council through the town manager's budget.
But this, I mean, I'm talking about both, you know, capital and operating, where are we spending our money? And I don't believe at the council we've had that conversation.
Well, it does take place to a large extent through the budget guidelines.
And, and I should add that this is one-time money. It should not be put into operating budgets because it's, it's, it's there, it's only there for, it's, it's taking money out of our savings account. It can't be built into any operations. That's why it was proposed, or we were proposing that it be used for a capital expense.
I'm going to go on to Darcy while you think about that, Shalani.
Yeah, I would like, um, no, I, I have concerns about the seventy-five thousand dollars for the dog park also because my recollection is that, that it was, um, originally supposed to not be funded by the taxpayers unless I'm wrong. Only the maintenance and so forth. And so, um, I, you know, as far as getting a recommendation from the finance committee, maybe when they send it back to us, it would, it would be nice if there were, there were, if they separated the recommendation. So we'd have a separate recommendation about the dog park. Cause I am thinking that the taxpayers might not want to pay for that, that extra expenditure.
Lynn, Dave Zomek has his hand raised in the audience. Is it possible for him to respond to that? Cause he, he'll, he'll have the most knowledge on the, the details of that cost.
Thank you, David. Please enter, um, I'll have to bring you in as a panelist. Thank you for calling attention to that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, David, did you want to speak to the dog park?
Sure. Thanks very much, Lynn. I'll be, I'll be brief. And if there's, obviously there'll be follow-up with the finance committee and happy to, to attend those meetings too. Yeah, really quickly, um, I just wanted to give a, a, a brief history. So the dog park effort is about ten years old. Uh, we have the dog park task force, which is chaired by Jim Pistrang and, and the vice chair, Ted Diamond. And that group has been working, you know, uh, steadily on, on getting the dog park built out at, uh, the old landfill. We selected the old landfill site, so it's been a very deliberate process. We selected the old landfill site because we didn't have to buy land. We could use that, that site, uh, because we own it and nothing is going to happen on there, uh, in the, in the, in the long term. Um, all of the funds to date have been, uh, come from three sources. Uh, the main source is the Stanton Foundation. So the town went after a grant, um, and, and got about a two hundred thousand dollar grant from, from the Stanton Foundation. The other funding was through CPA. And then the task force raised over forty thousand dollars themselves to put into that project. So as Paul indicated, we ran into two challenges that were simply unanticipated. One is that we had an extremely wet summer in two thousand, uh, twenty-one, as we did in two thousand eighteen. And we had, uh, a significant amount of drainage runoff, uh, too much rain, frankly. And we had to add a significant amount of subsurface drainage, uh, to move water off the site. The second thing that happened is we determined that the cap from nineteen, it's about nineteen eighty-seven, the cap, the landfill cap that protects the top of the landfill was never surveyed. So we had estimates as to where that cap was, but we didn't realize and nobody knew that it was, that it goes almost out to Old Belcher Town Road, which is where we're building the dog park. So those two challenges created a shortfall in the budget. We had to do some change orders and those two, two unforeseen challenge, uh, unforeseen, uh, change orders, uh, created this gap in the budget. But I, I just wanted to emphasize that the project is, you know, longstanding. Most of the money is coming from other sources, um, and the task force has done an amazing job. But, um, unfortunately, these two issues came up. And by and large, the, the overall goal is we have to protect the cap of the landfill, uh, which is required by DEP while at the same time trying to build this, this park, which the community has asked for, for over ten years. So happy to take any questions.
Uh, David, just to follow up, do you have any estimate about how much of this seventy-five would be necessary just to make sure the cap was protected?
Both, both aspects of this are really related to the cap, Lynn. You can't tease these apart. The subsurface drainage protects the cap as well. So, um, it's a very complicated project because we're trying to do something on the cap of the landfill. So this has gone through kind of excruciating detail and study. We, DPW, Jason Skeels, our town engineer, has been on the project from the get-go and done an amazing job. And he's worked very closely with DEP. We've had to work with, uh, the, um, natural heritage program to work, uh, with them on the rare species, the grass upper sparrows. So it's, it's really like threading a needle out there, but it's, it's a great site. It was at no cost to the town. And actually, the overall budget for the, for the, um, for the dog park is in line or less than many other dog parks around the Commonwealth. So this is not a, uh, a, a high-budget project. The Stanton Foundation frankly would not have funded it if it was. So it's not, uh, by any means the, you know, Ferrari of dog parks. It's just, it's a complicated site because of the cap and we have to protect that for future generations.
Do, would we have to protect the cap regardless?
The cap of the landfill, unless, you know, if and when technology catches up with reclamation of waste, the cap of the landfill has to be maintained in perpetuity. The cap of both the old landfill and the new landfill. We're going through very similar exercises, if you will, to put in the solar at the north landfill. We must protect the cap while doing solar. And likewise, we must protect the cap while repurposing a very small portion of the other landfill for a dog park.
Thank you. Uh, Dorothy, uh, actually, yeah, Dorothy, go ahead.
This is really in, in reference to Shalani's, where, when are we going to discuss, uh, priorities? But one item that we have discussed often amongst the council and certainly in public comment is sidewalks and roads. And, um, sidewalks are used by everybody of all ages, uh, for a variety of physical activities. We talk about a walkable town and we don't have We talk about a walkable town and we don't have one right now in terms of many of our existing sidewalks, they're dangerous. And we don't have many things that we do for the elderly, the well elderly in this town. Well, one thing you could do that they've asked for again and again is to fix the sidewalks. Not a week goes by in which people don't talk to me about sidewalks or tell me about an accident that they had. So I do think that sidewalks has been discussed. Roads, Kathy once said to me, you can tell when you're in Amherst by the roads. I said, what? And she showed me she drove out of Amherst and all of a sudden the roads improved. And I said, this is crazy. I mean, that there should be an actually at the line of the town, the quality of the roads changes dramatically. So I think actually as a matter of pride, we won't talk about cars and their struts and whatever. But just as a matter of pride, I think that we do want to get our roads filled to show that we take our town seriously. So I, I think that those two have been discussed. I do agree, Shalini, that I think that we need to have, we need to have, maybe we have, because we haven't been able to meet in person or have a retreat. But I do think that we need to have a discussion of of priorities and plans and kind of like where we think we'd like our emphasis to be. Cause we were just battered every week, every, you know, every meeting with so many things that we don't really have a chance to follow through and to develop and to see what other people think. So I'm agreeing with you on that.
Pat?
Briefly, Dave, thank you. I was going to ask a question about the cap on the for the solar on the landfill. So it looks like we have to pay attention to that. And I, you know, along with Dorothy, I have to support the sidewalk issue, particularly for people who are disabled, who have visual disabilities or physical disabilities that require walkers or chairs. We really need to work on sidewalks. It's not frivolous. I have a lot of problems with $75,000 for the dog park, or I did until I heard that it was about the cap. And that makes sense and that feels like a town responsibility. That's all.
Thank you, Pat. Alyssa?
So recognizing, of course, that we have talked about this in the sense of like not in as great of a conversation as Shalini's referring to, which would be really helpful, but through the JCPC process and through our budget policy guidelines, which we'll be working on soon, is that as much, as important as sidewalks are to me, $250,000 buys you a couple of feet. It's not actually going to be doing a ton in most cases, although it depends on what they're actually planning to apply it to. Which then leads me back to the question that I meant to ask when we were on the ARPA presentation, which is we're not spending any of the ARPA money on fire EMS vehicles because that doesn't make sense to me. I heard what Paul said about how long it takes these things and trying to deploy funds. I get that part, but we don't have the ability to fund those things anywhere else except through the capital plan. And so I'm just confused about why we would put the money into sidewalks that we obviously can't work on much at this time of year anyway. And it's going to be a relatively small project unless I hear about something amazing that can actually spread that $250,000 a different way. But yet that could buy us something substantial in terms of a fire EMS vehicle. So what's happening there? I don't understand.
Paul or Sean?
Yeah, so I can wait on that. So, so we're getting back on track with ambulance purchases. Again, Paul said we have one being delivered. I think there's one in this upcoming capital plan coming up. So we're either on schedule or maybe one year behind in terms of, in terms of our ambulance replacement schedule. And again, that's consistent with many of our vehicles. And then we also, something that'll be coming probably a year from now, we also approved the new pumper fire truck in this past round. So that's something we're working with the fire department now to replace. So the big thing is the ladder truck. And it is something I know people don't want to hear this, but we're always trying to find ways to to share that cost because it is a regional resource and it's so expensive. And I mean, again, that's why we're looking for guidance from you all tonight. Because we are looking for other funds, but if you say this is a high priority, that will then dictate sort of our next steps in terms of pursuing funds for that.
And just to add, so that the pumper truck is about to be ordered or they've specked it out. It just needs to be ordered, but it takes 14 months to get it delivered because they build these things. So that one, you know, we're, there's some issues with it right now and getting that finalized, but that'll be in the pipeline soon. Just so people are aware that that the council had already appropriated funds for a pumper truck, not the ladder truck that people talk about. It's a different, it's a smaller engine.
Right.
Mindy, Joe?
Yeah, I just have to go back to Sean just said that we're at least a year behind on a lot of our vehicle replacements. Yet we have a ton of money and we're not buying vehicles with it. And we have ARPA money. And if we're a year behind on ambulances and we have a ladder truck that is over 30 years old, that I, my understanding is doesn't really work if you're on the top of the ladder and the ladder is extended. You might not be able to get down or control your down. You know, it's been out of service more than it's in. And if it takes 14 months to get a pumper truck, why are we not starting that process now for other things if we have the funds? Because, you know, what happens if we, God forbid, have a fire on the fourth story of a building? And we don't have a ladder truck to get to it, you know, like, and it takes 14 plus months to get a truck and another four months to get to the specs. Like even if we spent that money now, we're, we're looking a year and a half away before we can get a working ladder truck. I, I think we need to stop waiting for finding funds and sharing that. Finding ways to share that unless the manager or someone else can tell us that it's on the horizon to find that. I assume that shared is asking UMass to pay something. But if that's on the horizon within a couple of months, then I might understand. But I don't understand why it's nowhere in either of these two plans, the, the additional capital funds or the ARPA funds.
Andy?
So as somebody who's served on various JCPCs for many years, I've been dealing with these various equipment needs for a long, long time. The normal way that we fund the ambulance purchases, and we probably will fund them in the future, is from the ambulance fund itself because we drive revenue from billing insurance companies in Medicare, whoever is responsible for paying the EMS call for the being served. And that goes into the ambulance fund. And that has historically been where we have been funding those purchases from. And I think things got a little bit off a cycle for varieties reasons. So either Sean or Paul can explain, but I don't think that the ambulance fund is going away as the source. And as far as the ladder truck, yes, we have been talking about that for a long time. But the, if I recall, in a discussion, maybe five or more years ago, because it was goes back to select board days, the cost of a ladder truck is well over a million dollars. And that was at that time, so I can't imagine that it isn't higher now. And as a consequence, it's not going to be purchased by us setting aside funds to pay in cash. We are going to have to bond that purchase if we do it ourselves.
Well, this conversation is to be continued at the finance committee tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Is there any further comments? Seeing none, we're going to now go on to the use of the public way. The item that was pulled off of the consent agenda, excuse me, is regarding the SUFA Public Information and Emergency Communication Signs. Is Brianna still with us?
She is.
Okay, why don't we bring Brianna in on case we need to ask her questions? So Dorothy and Darcy, the two of you both wanted this off of the agenda. Why don't you begin?
Yes.
Well, I'll, I'll start off very quickly. I had wondered about them from the very beginning because I didn't find them attractive. I thought they were intrusive and I thought they did clutter up the sidewalk. And I remember one picture of when we were talking about the North Common. There were so many things around the edges of the common and the SUFA signs that were, one of them in one spot, that I just didn't see that they added that much. And I guess it's because they look like that robotic sweeper that's in the supermarket that goes around and and I just guess I don't like that look. But I know that we were, we accepted it because some people wanted it and because it had the charging stations, which sounded like a public asset. And I believe we were told that if we didn't renew, we could keep the charging stations. So and there's a picture of the charging station being used informally by kids. And I thought, yeah, public charging stations, that is a social benefit. So I am wondering, this will be in my last sentence. Do you have any statistics or any figures as to how often the charging stations are used? And do they, do they function or are they tricky and have to do the required servicing? So how, how big an asset are the charging stations? If we get rid of the signs, but just, you know, keep our charging stations?
That's it. Brianna?
Thank you, councillor, for your question. So the charging stations, as you mentioned, are separate from, technically separate from the signs that we're talking about this evening. And those are town property and we, we will be keeping those. We don't have any hard numbers or analytics on that because nothing is tracked on that. It's simply a charging core that's solar powered. And anecdotally, I mean, I've seen them be used. And particularly the one outside of the church at the bus stop has gotten lots of use that I have seen. But we do not track any of the devices or information that goes out from the charging cores themselves. And again, those are separate from the signs that we're talking about this evening. And we do own those outright. I hope that answered your question, but I'm happy to follow up if I missed a piece.
No, I thank you. Very good answers.
Darcy?
Yeah, I guess I brought this up because I heard from a constituent that she would like additional time. So, you know, to be able to come back and give feedback because she's under the impression that, you know, that these are not necessarily liked by at least a certain segment of residents and and aesthetically and as far as fulfilling their initial purpose, I guess, of providing information. I don't really, you know, I, I, I haven't actually ever read one of the signs. I don't know if any of you have. I think that they're probably less useful during the pandemic when people aren't out as much. But in any event, I'm kind of hoping that we can just hold it over and have another discussion. So that if there are people out there in the public who do want to weigh in, they have a chance to do that because we'll have two discussions like we're supposed to having have on different topics.
Shalini?
Yeah, I would say that having worked with community engagement for a long time, how hard it is to get information out to people and just creating as many avenues and channels as we can to distribute information and is really important. Like we may not in this council uses these signage, but we just don't know people waiting in the bus stops or having a very different lifestyle than ours are using, you know, accessing information from different places. So I would just err on the side of providing more channels of information than the fact that. And given that we haven't heard other than the aesthetics and aesthetics is a personal choice. Like I might like that color, you may not. And so I don't think, I mean, I'd be open to feedback, of course. I want to hear more in detail, what do they not like about it? Because I haven't, I haven't fully understood what is not liked about it. But just for purpose of community engagement, I think it's an important feature to have.
Brianna, do you have any statistics or all about the use of them, feedback about them, et cetera?
Yes, so I have some information that I can share and maybe even just a quick recap of some of the things that we've been using it for might be helpful for the councillors, if I may. So councillor Baldwin mentioned this, but we have transit times on the signs. On the, on the actual signs themselves, we've had easy to access, scannable links to the town of Amherst website and COVID information as well as state information. We've shared the mask mandate reminders on the signs, other public health reminders, reminding folks to sign up for emergency alerts and parking ban notifications, highlighting our charging stations that we referenced earlier. We've linked our other digital tools like Engage Amherst on the sign, as well as when we're hiring for jobs, Juneteenth and other events. It's linked up to our tweets and we're able to send out emergency alerts. They also include the weather, date and temperature. We've started to use a live polling capability for those who are not connected online with us in other ways. Again, referencing kind of the the Omni multi-channel ways to engage our public. We've started up a collaboration with local businesses, bid in the chamber to bring new utility to the sign and to support some of our local economic development efforts. So those are some of the things that we've been doing and we're looking to expand and make those more useful for us. We have included some questions about the use and experience with the signs to on our digital engagement community survey that we've been working with UMass Amherst partners on. We don't have the final results yet, but we have included a question about accessing the signs and its utility for community members that I hope to have data to share towards the end of the month. But we do have some preliminary results from that. Again, the signs do not track, so we don't have a lot of analytics. And in that sense, we are able to tell who's, an aggregate number of people passing by the sign, who scanned items on the sign. And we have seen that that's gone up when we start, we moved to QR codes. So we're seeing an increased use of the sign, especially in the spring as, as community members reemerged and students were back in town. So we've seen that grow towards the end of the pilot, which is part of the reason why we're requesting this one year extension to, to really fully gauge the utility of the signs in a non-pandemic year.
Okay. And am I correct that this is for one year and at no additional cost to us?
It is for an extension for one year, an additional kind of extension of that initial pilot for one year. The, the signs, the use of the signs, the technology, the cellular capabilities in order to update the signs and the content is going to be a $6,000 cost, $6,000 cost for if we go into a year two. That would be from existing funds and that would be for all three signs.
Okay, thank you. Evan?
Yeah, so first of all, thank you for listing all of the different things that the signs have been used for. I think that was really useful, especially using them to just like transit times. For those people who don't have a smartphone with an app on, with up to date transit times, that that can be really essential. I've, I have two questions. One, you sort of just segwayed into, which is, you know, in our first year, part of what was enticing was that it was at no cost to the town. The second year now is a $6,000 cost to the town, which is fairly small, but there is some cost. And in the memo and repeated just now with the statement, funds will be allocated from existing budgets. And I'm just not clear on what existing budget those funds are coming from. And so I'm just sort of curious. And is that money that had been sort of put, already put towards some type of outreach and communication? Or is it coming from somewhere else? And then the second question is just, you know, we have two councillors who have said that they, they have heard personally from a resident who doesn't particularly like the sign. But has the town heard feedback or complaints from the public? Have people reached out to you with input either positive or negative?
Thank you for your questions, councillor. The, the first question, I may look to Paul about the actual budget, if possible. I believe it's been set aside for existing
Uh, I believe it's been set aside for our existing, um, IT budget, but I.
So I can, I can wait.
Or maybe Sean.
So, so this would come from, um, I mean, there's a couple of different sources it could come from, but it would come from, um, funds that we've identified as being available in this year's budget that, um, either through vacancies or through supply budgets that aren't expended. Um, but we, um, like in the town manager's budget, for example, um, there's positions that are vacant right now. So, um, so again, that would, that could cover for one year, wouldn't be able to cover for multiple years. Um, but it could cover a one-time costs until the program is reevaluated a year from now.
Okay. And other, other feedback that the town may have received was the other question.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for that save, Sean. So initially I would say, um, there were some concern about the actual vinyl application because we had to, um, it was funded initially, the pilot year was funded through CARES. We had to get them in the ground and running and set up, um, by December 31st of last year. So we were rushing with, uh, to meet that deadline. So there were some initial issues with the vinyl applique because of the extremely cold weather that they were applied on. After those quality issues there were taken care of, I have not received any direct, um, negative feedback. Some questions about the sign, how to use it, what, what they can use it for. But that, the majority of any question, um, issues that came in were based on the condition of the vinyls slipping due to the application in cold weather.
Okay. Pat.
Thank you and thank you, Brianna. Uh, I would like to, uh, vote on this this evening. I don't think it needs a discussion again next week. So I would like to move forward with a vote.
Okay. Uh, listen, did Jenny have any additional comment?
Yeah, I mean, and just to summarize, we don't have any complaints of it preventing use of the sidewalk, which is one of the things we were concerned about, that it was somehow going to make it harder for people to get around, even though we looked at that carefully. And we haven't heard those complaints. We haven't heard complaints of vandalism. A single year additional to see how much more people might use them under somewhat different conditions. The only thing I would ask is that we do this next September, October in terms of like maybe putting it out to Engage Amherst then saying, are you using the signs? How do you like the signs? And so we could try and actively solicit a little more feedback in time before we talk about the next renewal process, because we're kind of up against it right now in terms of making that decision. But I see every reason to continue for another year at that relatively low cost, but to more actively solicit feedback after we've thought of some other ways of using them as you've described.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and make the first motion. And to suspend Town Council Rules of Procedure, Rule 8.4 for the current agenda item. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Thank you. Any other further discussion or question? I'm going to start with Darcy Demont.
No.
Lynn Griesmer is a yes. Mandy Jo Hanke.
Hi.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Ball Mill.
Yes.
Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat De Angelis.
Aye.
It's 12 in favor, one opposed. No abstentions, no absence. We're going to move on to the actual motion, which is to approve the extension of the existing one-year pilot use of the Public Way for Information Communication signs at three locations in Amherst for the period of one additional year at the following locations. One, information sign on North Pleasant Street by crosswalk across from Central Fire Station in front of Farmer Starbucks location. One, information sign at the northwest corner of Amity Street and North Pleasant Street. And one information sign at the sidewalk of South Pleasant Street and Spring Street in front of the Town Common by the Spring Street Parking Lot. Is there a second?
Ryan, second.
Is there any further discussion or comment? Seeing none, I'm going to move Griesmer's first and it's an aye. Hanke.
Hi.
Pam.
Yes.
Evan.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalini Ball Mill.
Yes.
Alyssa.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Darcy.
No.
Passes 12 in favor, one opposed. No, no abstentions and no absence. Moving on to the next agenda item is the reorganization of town agencies. And let me just be very clear upfront. Athena, would you show the section of the charter that pertains to this item? So basically the charter, in a very thoughtful way, said that anytime the town manager wants to change something about the organization of town government, they need to bring it to the council. And the council then has some requirements. First of all, uh, once we receive the memo, uh, and in this case, two memos, uh, we have to refer to an appropriate committee and they have to, um, hold a public hearing within 30 days. Mandy Jo, I always accept corrections on how I read this.
Public forum, not public hearing.
I'm sorry, public forum within 30 days. And then no later than the second regular meeting of the town council following the public forum, report either that it approves or disapproves of the plan. And if nothing happens, it becomes effective in 60 days. So there was some back and forth discussion about which committee it should go to. And then the other question was the issue of which committee would hold a hearing. So our two discussions tonight are which committee should it go to? And who will hold the hearing and when? At, uh, back and forth.
Point of order.
Yes.
Whichever committee it goes to under the charter holds the public forum.
Right. Um, so, um, committees that were discussed include GOL, TSO and Finance. The way we have written the motion, it includes, it is TSO. And it is my understanding from the Chair of TSO that he is prepared to hold that hearing on, I mean, that forum, I'm sorry, that public forum on.
December 9th.
December 9th, which is within 30-day period. Are there questions? Comments? Alyssa.
So as a TSO member, I'm happy to have this referred to TSO since it's Provision of Town Services. My question is that since we've never done this before and we're exhausted because we started early tonight in particular, um, what is it that the council wants to know beyond what's written on these pages? Because we can, you know, we can schedule the public forum and we can tell people here, look at these two pages of pieces of paper. But is there anything else the council's going to want to know? Because again, it's one of those, we can't modify the plan. We could talk the town manager into modifying the plan, but we can't say, oh, we'll take out line four. That's not how it works. It's either an up or down. So I want to know before it goes to TSO, or if you have some other methods you'll suggest then of how people can, other councillors can tell TSO. These are the things I'm concerned about in order to appreciate TSO's recommendation. One that springs to mind, again, because this is new to us and maybe Mandy Jo knows from the work on the Charter Commission, when they, you know, created this provision and looked at it other places, is if job descriptions are normally a part of this conversation. I understand completely that the Charter doesn't say job descriptions are part of this, but I'm expecting that members of the public are going to ask about job descriptions. And so I'm wondering what the town council thinks on that.
Okay. Um, George. Actually, George lowered his hand. No, he didn't. George, next.
That's his, that's his hand.
Yep.
Thank you, Lynn. Uh, some of my questions deal with finance, financial impacts of this. And so I don't believe TSO is particularly, um, adapted dealing with that. Um, though if that's where it goes, I guess that's where those questions would be raised. The Char, the Charter does seem to say a committee. And, um, it frustrates me a little bit because I feel like in some sense, there are really three committees that should be looking at this. This is a very, very important decision. As Sean alluded to earlier this evening, um, in his memory, he can't think of any time where this has happened, where the, uh, the town is, is looking at hiring 12 new employees and creating two new departments. Um, and we're going to send this just to one committee. And right now it looks like it's going to be TSO. Um, perhaps because of the Charter language, that we have no choice. Uh, I'm not convinced of that, but perhaps that's the case. But I think I have a whole host of questions related to the financial impacts, um, the use of, of our reserves. And, um, I'll raise those questions at TSO if that's where it ends up. But I would personally prefer that this also go to Finance. I also think it raises basic organizational questions that, according to the charge of GOL, actually is under its, its purview. And, uh, so, uh, I would actually be open to three committees looking at this. It gives the public more opportunity to engage and ask questions and, uh, participate. Um, the public, uh, forum will certainly provide that as well. Um, but it'll be a one-time deal. It'll be, and if people miss it, that's that. So, um, I'd really push for more than one committee. Um, and if I had my choice, it would be Finance.
Evan.
Yeah, so I do believe that this, uh, falls firmly within the jurisdiction of TSO as it is about how the town will provide services, uh, to the residents. I also hear George that, uh, this action has significant financial implications. And I think that it is fine to, um, refer, uh, it to both Finance and TSO with, uh, the rec, the referred to Finance being for a recommendation to TSO or to the council, but that TSO would be the body that would hold the public forum and give a recommendation on whether or not to approve or to not approve. As I said, I've, I've charted out the TSO work plan for the remainder of this term. Um, and we do have the ability to hold a public forum on December 9th. Um, that also gives Finance some time, um, between now and then, if they wanted to take a look and, uh, develop a recommendation or input either to the council or TSO. Um, I believe for Finance to do so. Um, but I do think that it, it does fall within, uh, the jurisdiction of TSO. I also think we need to be very, uh, clear with both the council and the public, um, that the vote of the council is an up or down vote. We have no ability to amend or suggest changes. And I think we need to make that clear, um, as an expectation for the public. So that if they come to the council and say, I support it, but I want you to change this, we have no ability to do that. And so what we are looking for from the public is, do you support us creating this new, uh, these, these two new agencies, um, as proposed by the town manager or not? And it can't be a conditional, well, I support it if you do this or if I do that, because our, our hands are tied when it comes to that with regard to the Charter language. And so making sure that we're clear throughout this entire process, um, that we have no ability to make changes.
Andy Jo, with regard to, based on your expertise and knowledge of the Charter, is there any reason we can't refer it to two and have TSO hold the hearing? I mean, the forum.
Only one committee holds the forum and only one committee makes the true recommendation on an up or down vote to the council. The council, I guess, can choose to send it to as many committees as it wants, but that adds work to all other councillors. And it is unclear where that work then goes, whether it goes to the council or the committee holding the public forum. But only one public forum gets held.
Right.
And one recommendation to the count, that's the committee that makes the recommendation to the council.
So, uh, Alyssa, you had your hand up and Andy, you also had your hand up. And then I'm going to make a suggestion. Go ahead, Alyssa.
So I, I just want to say two quick things. One is the Finance Committee has no outreach experience in comparison to TSO beyond the fact that it's clearly town services. So it, it makes eminent sense for TSO to be holding the public forum. Finance Committee can certainly look at it, but, but let me be really blunt. The ship has sailed. Financially, this is going to happen. We, we've already made that commitment as a town council, as the town manager has. So it doesn't really matter if we're not entirely thrilled with one particular aspect of the financing. It's going to happen. The question is just, are there modifications that we think are essential? That we can talk the town coun, the town manager into making because of the thumbs up or thumbs down? Or do we say it's good enough? Because I, I don't understand the concept of this going through a financial analysis. That's over. We have moved forward.
Okay. Are there other comments at this time? Paul.
Thank, so thank you. Um, so I think what Alyssa said early on was that if there are comments, is this the first time we're doing this, as, as was noted? This, uh, the submission meets the requirements of the Charter. If there's additional information or things that the councillors would like, uh, to support this, um, proposal, uh, please let me know, uh, in advance so we can get that for you, so you can make an informed decision.
Okay. Um, and given this, I'm going to make the following motion that's on your motion sheet, keeping it in TSO. In accordance with Charter Section 6.1 to refer the town manager, managers reorganization plan, Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Office dated November 12th, 2021, to the Town Services and Outreach Committee for a public forum by December 12th, 2021, and no later than the second regular meeting of the town council following the public hearing. But in advance of the last council meeting scheduled before January 11, 2022, report to the town council that approves, that it approves or disapproves of the plan. Is there a second?
Second, Ross.
Any further questions or comments? Mandy Jo.
I believe what TSO was supposed to do was make a recommendation as to whether the council should approve or disapprove a plan, but the Charter language just disappeared.
Before, um, make a recommendation. So, um, uh, so the, the way the motion would read in the end would be, um, but in advance of the last council meeting scheduled before July, January 11, 2022, make a recommendation to the town council that it should approve or disapprove of the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any problem with that change, George?
No, I don't have a problem with the change. I have a comment on the, uh, the motion.
Okay, please go ahead.
Well, I guess I am disturbed that, that there's no sense that, that we should at least ask the Finance Committee and its three resident members to, uh, take a look at this, uh, in order to help us make an informed judgment. I understand that it is an up and down vote. I do have serious questions about the financing of it. I don't quite understand Alyssa's comment that somehow we've had all these discussions and had all these presentations and we all are clear on what this actually means. Um, this is an extraordinary, uh, development in terms of creating two departments and 12 employees. Um, has all kinds of pension, OPED issues. It's got a host of things related to it, um, including, uh, drawing on the reserves. And I would just like to have, uh, those folks who actually spend time thinking about our budgets and finance, uh, to take a look at it and give us their thoughts. So I, I guess I may have to vote against this if it's only going to TSO. Uh, I have no problem with the, uh, public forum being in TSO. Um, it's a fact of the matter that it's an up or down vote. Um, but there's just a lot of questions I have and information that I assume others would like to have that I don't think TSO can provide.
Okay. Evan.
Uh, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm clarifying. So, um, we have to hold, uh, and maybe this is actually a question from, from Mandy, but we have to hold two separate public forums, one for the DEI, one two separate public forums, one for the DEI, one for CRES. But I would intend to hold both public forums on the same day and for TSO to deliberate on them as a pair and make a recommendation on both. But I want to just clarify that they have to be noticed as two separate public hearings. And run as two separate hearings. Forums, forums, yes.
I mean, they could be in the same forum, but they have to be two different discussions because the manager proposed two different reorganization plans instead of one plan.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Thank you for that. I think the way that you have, you shared a draft with Athena and myself. And I think the way you noticed it is appropriate based on everything. Andy? Please unmute.
Listen, that easy. So as far as the financial analysis question is concerned, I mean, I've been struggling with this and raised my hand before then, ordered and then ended up coming back again. I will bring this up tomorrow as unanticipated business at the finance committee meeting to the extent we have time. But I do want to emphasize that problem that this is coming in with a time clock attached to it when we're trying to do a draft of the guidelines and handle several other matters, one which was referred to us, which is the repair fund on the bench shell and the, whether we have any comments on the ARPA. So it's, it's coming at a very difficult time. But the comments were made by several other counselors. I totally agree with, I think that if the finance committee does have comments that they should just be sent to TSO. It should not be a separate referral. And TSO can include them or not as it seems appropriate as it goes forward. And I guess that the last thing that, just as in a general sense, not as chair of the finance committee, but as counselor thinks about budgets all the time. I am concerned about not the first years of funding, but how the continuation of the program is going to affect budgets two and three years down the line. And I certainly would like to have, make sure that that discussion happens someplace. And it might be appropriate for the finance committee to actually have that discussion and then just forward the information to the committee that is taking responsibility and to consider it as it wishes.
Andy, would you, is there a way you would like to amend the motion? To include that? And Athena, could you put the motions up on the screen? Okay, let me just point out that Athena has already changed the wording, which is just appropriate. Is there anything you would like to add into this? Just thought, think about that for a minute.
I don't have specific wording, but if you're going to include anything in the motion, it would be just to say that, to add that finance committee asks whether it has any input to provide to TSO. And if it does, do so prior to the date of the forum.
So after, so after the words, for a public forum by December 12, 2021, with input from the finance committee? It's not a perfect motion.
I'd be interested in Evan's comments as chair of TSO about that wording, but I think that would be fine and
Evan, do you have any comment on that one at this point? You might put the words someplace else.
I guess I, I understand the desire to work this in as part of the motion. I guess I question whether it's necessary. My concern is for a public forum by December 12, with input from the finance committee to me feels restrictive in that if the finance committee doesn't get to it by the 9th, or if the finance committee has no input, does this, does this require us to have input from the finance committee versus we've had this discussion, the finance committee has heard it, Andy has the authority to just add a discussion to the agenda of a finance committee. And if the finance committee has input, knows when the public forum is and could send it. So I guess, I guess I question whether this has to be part of the motion or whether finance, just based on this discussion, can just take it up and send input to TSO, which, and I will say as chair of TSO, TSO would welcome that input as it does with input from any committee that has an interest in any of our issues.
Just leave it there for the moment. Shalini, I'm going to go to George, who was the person who really wanted this in the motion.
Yeah, Lynn, I feel that this is really being done just because I've raised a point. And I don't think, I agree with Evan that the discussion is sufficient. I've expressed my concern. I don't think it needs to go in the motion unless there are other counselors who wish to join me. And it doesn't sound like there is. So I think you can leave the motion as it is. I've expressed my concern. And if some information or some comment is passed along to TSO, that would, I would like that, but that's just my personal preference. My deeper concern is one that I guess I haven't expressed clearly. And I'm not sure that this motion has anything to do with it. But that's why I thought it should go to three different committees. I just don't think the public is very aware of what's going on. Generally speaking, certainly that's my experience. And this is all being rushed. And there's a 30-day clock that ticks as soon as Paul submits it, so I understand that. But I am concerned about the fact that many people are going to find out about this well after it's done. And then they're going to come to us and say, well, I didn't know about this. So that's a different issue. I just want to express it, but I think Evan is correct. We should leave this as it is.
Okay, Shalini?
Um, I, for me, obviously for all of us, it's not a question of whether we're doing it or not and whether we have the money or not. But I would like the finance committee's expertise and input into this discussion, like moving forward and for them to have a formal discussion around it and provide the input to the TSO. So that's all I wanted to say. It's like, for me, it's both. And I do need to leave after this. Sorry.
Andy, I get this sense that we, you've agreed that we'll have this discussion, but we're not going to include it in the motion.
And that's fine. I think
All right, fine. So then I want to take it out of that and we're going to go back to the motion. It's been made and seconded without this. And are there any further comments or discussion? George? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm not on the right screen. Thank you. Then I'm going to move to a vote. Mandy Jo?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Bellmell? Shalini may have left. Yes, Shalini is now absent. Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. It's unanimous with 12 in favor, none opposed, none abstaining, and one absent. The second motion is identical to this. It is in accordance with Charter Section 6.1 to refer the town manager's reorganization plan, community responders for equity, safety, and service dated November 12, 2021, to the Town Services and Outreach Committee for a public forum by December 12, 2021, and no later than the second regular meeting of the town council following the public hearing, but advance of the last council meeting scheduled before January 11, 2020 to recommend to the town council that it approve or disapprove the plan.
Second, Hanaky.
Thank you. Second, is there any further discussion? Alyssa?
I was just going to say briefly that again, just as we're going to hear from the finance committee, and I'm really glad they can schedule a discussion, we can hear from individual counselors who can write to Evan about anything they think we should know. Because again, it's the first time we're doing it. And I'm going to reiterate the question about job descriptions. If people think that's important, then we should know that before the forum.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Then I'm going to begin with Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Kevin Ross?
Aye.
George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalini Bellmell is absent. Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is aye, and Mandy Jo Hanaky?
Aye.
The vote is 12-0-0-1. We are going on to the Surveillance Technology Bylaw.
Let me just interject something very quickly. Yes, I want to let the council know that we will be doing our outreach for these positions. We won't do any hiring until the council has acted. But rather than wait for a period of time, we do want to start to do active outreach for these positions, to say you're aware of that.
Which means then you have job descriptions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Not, not for all of them, but for some of them.
Yeah, almost final, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. Surveillance Technology Bylaw. Mandy Jo and Pat, you have come back with a slight revision and please speak to that.
Yeah, well, I'm going to make the motion first and then I'll describe the slight revision.
Certainly.
And to adopt the Surveillance Technology Bylaw as shown on pages eight to 15 of the motion sheet with the town clerk to add the appropriate bylaw number references after adoption.
Okay, is there a second? Second, DeAngelis? Thank you. Andy Jo and Pat, go ahead.
Yeah, so there are a couple of Scrivener-type changes that had survived some of the many changes we'd already gone through that we have now corrected thanks to our own site, but also George Ryan spotted a couple. But the biggest change is in Section I, which is the section people had the most comment about last, last week, two weeks ago. And that one was the Surveillance Technology Community Equity Impact Assessment Report. And people were concerned that it was a required annual report. And so what we have done is we have changed that from the required annual report to match sort of Section H, and which is, which the town manager originally was an annual report and the town manager was concerned about that. And so that section had already been modified to at the request of council. And now Section I, as the motion and second was made, is also a, upon referral from the town council or in conjunction with a request to the town manager for that town department surveillance report. So it would not be required annually. It could not be done more than annually. And it also would have to be specific to a sort of surveillance technology. So it would not apply to the entire face of everything that has been approved by the town council for use of surveillance technology. The town council would need to identify a specific surveillance technology. They wanted an equity impact assessment on.
And are there questions? Or Pat, did you have a further comment? Okay, are there questions? George?
Yes, Lynn, I and Kathy would like to propose an amendment to this bylaw as presented this evening by the sponsors. And if you could put that motion up on the screen, I would like to speak to it. So the motion is to amend the proposed Surveillance Technology Oversight Bylaw as follows. One is to remove the following clause from the first sentence of Section H.3, quote, and the Surveillance Technology Community Equity Impact Assessment and Policy Guidance, comma, as detailed in Section I.1, close quote. And two, to delete Section I in its entirety.
In order?
Yes, Mandy Jo?
The motion would also need to rename the following sections appropriately.
Thank you. So if our, thank you, Athena.
The subsequent sections, whatever you want to say, but there are sections after Section I.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. The motion's been made. Is there a second? Kathy, Shane seconds. Okay. So I'm going to ask George and Kathy to speak to the motion. Come in.
Thank you, Lynn. I've been convinced by the sponsors that even though at the moment I do not see any imminent danger or threat that needs addressing. On the issue of facial recognition technology and the use of drones and other kinds of technological advancements, make it, I think, prudent for us to have some kind of bylaw that would make it, set a clear process that the council would be notified and have oversight into the adoption of any kind of surveillance technology. That seems to me to be a prudent thing to do. And I think this bylaw by and large does do that. In fact, I think it does it a bit more than is needed. And so this amendment is not against the spirit of the bylaw. But it's suggesting that at least in one section, Section I, it goes a bit too far. And I appreciate the fact that the sponsors have made this now a optional rather than mandatory report. But I would like to make the case that first of all, there are already three reports that this bylaw requires, or at least in one case, it could be requested by the council. But given those three reports, I believe the council would have more than enough information to both evaluate and monitor any use or potential misuse of surveillance technology. So the existing bylaws as it stands, just with these three already reports in it, I think gives the council more than enough information as far as being able to do what this bylaw wants us to be able to do. I think secondly, in the detail that's provided in Section I, even as it's been changed today, the basic requirements are still the same. I think it asks far too much of our committees in terms of what we can expect them to do. And I think that it just goes beyond what I think we can reasonably expect a council committee to do. And finally, back to the KP Law Memo, which as I think some of you remember from last time, made the point that this bylaw does in fact go well beyond what is currently required by state or federal law. That's not in itself a reason not to do it, but it does make us more legally liable, exposes us to more legal potential difficulty. And I think Section I is a good example of that. And so I think also for that reason, it would be prudent to remove it. So I think that this still accomplishes what the sponsors want to accomplish. It still provides us with a way of ensuring that this kind of technology can never be adopted without our approval. And if it is misused, it provides a way for us to monitor that and to address it. And I think that, so that's the argument that removing Section I doesn't do any serious damage at all to the bylaw. In fact, I think it makes it better. And so that's the spirit in which Kathy and I are making this amendment.
Kathy, did you want to speak further?
George was pretty eloquent, so I'll just be really short. I mean, if you read H carefully, and he was the I mean, if you read H carefully, and he was the one who pointed out to me, anytime the council wants, we can request. So it already says, upon request from the council, we get a report. Then we get a pretty detailed list of what the report should contain. And it's for anything we've approved as a surveillance technology. Both he has to come to us to get it approved, then we can ask for what's happening with it, and a report back. So I think H does a really good job of offering the protection already. And I, to some extent, is redundant, but it asks the council to do something we really can't do. We can't go out and get separate data. We have to be asking data. So I think it's a much cleaner bylaw altogether without I.
Are there further comments about the amendment? George, you have your hand up.
Sorry.
Then we will, at this point, the motion that is on the screen has been made and seconded. It is an amendment to the original motion, and so we, Darcy. Please unmute.
I just have a question of the sponsors about, did the section, where did the Section I come from? Did you, was that in a model Surveillance Technology Bylaw in Cambridge? Or where did you get that?
Mandy Jo or Pat?
It's been so long. I think it might have been Cambridge. I don't think we came up with it on our own. I will say that. So I don't know whether it was Cambridge or whether it was the model, one of the models from one of the various ACLU state entities we looked at. But it was somewhere else.
And are you satisfied that the other reports will be adequate?
Pat?
I'm not satisfied that the other reports would be adequate. I think if we take the example of facial recognition, which was a bylaw we were working on that the state took over, it has very embedded in it systemic racist practices that makes misidentification of people of color and also of women very frequent. That's known. And I think that it would be important to listen to the community and get information about technology and its impact on people. So that's where I am.
Evan?
Yeah, so like, Mandy, it's been so long. I'm trying to continually reconstruct the history of this through TSO. But I believe Section I, or perhaps some revision of Section I, was in response to comments I had actually made at one point in time, where I was concerned about having the town, who wanted to implement any particular surveillance technology, be the one reporting out whether or not that surveillance technology would have any type of disparate impact on certain communities. And I felt like that type of analysis or that type of outreach needed to happen outside of the town departments to avoid any potential conflict there. And I think that, I think, and then Mandy and Pat can correct me if I'm wrong, that is, you know, one of the comments that led them to pull this into a council committee. And so I guess if our concerns of surveillance technology are the potential impacts, especially on equity, I think that we need to have some way of listening to people and pulling together information that doesn't necessarily rest on the town staff or town manager who's seeking to implement a particular surveillance technology. I understand the concern certainly of George and Kathy. I think that this report would likely be referred to TSO, and I would be kind of scared at first to figure out how to actually do that. But I also am fairly confident that our committees can figure out how to do things. I mean, I wasn't sure how we were going to put together a comprehensive housing policy. It took us two and a half years, but CRC figured it out. And I also know that TSO has relied very heavily on other town committees to do its work and reaching out and identifying certain stakeholders. And I think that practice would continue. And so TSO could also identify other relevant town committees and use their experience and outreach to put together this. And over time, it could be reformed. So I share a lot of the concerns of George and Kathy. I'm willing to keep this piece in the Surveillance Technology Bylaw with the recognition that if it becomes overly burdensome or overly problematic, a future council can also always amend this bylaw.
Mandy Jo, you had your hand up.
I'm good.
Okay, George?
I guess two thoughts, just briefly, again. I would think that if there is an issue, the issue would arise because of complaints from citizens about the misuse. And so I don't think that this kind of high degree of specificity is really going to be, it's going to really result from individuals complaining to their representatives that they've been victims of, or been somehow feel like they're being oversurveilled or whatever. And I think that's how this is going to, if it does ever happen, that's how it would play out. And then you would have opportunity for that to be addressed in a committee. The second point again is that it is so specific and so detailed that it does, it seemed to me, expose the town to potential legal liability if it fails to meet all the various requirements that are laid out here. So I think that it's prudent to, I think there's more than enough here for us to, for the council to monitor and address any abuses, and that this just goes way too far. And in doing so, it furthers that concern that KP Law mentioned in its memo. And so I guess I would urge again the councilors to simplify this in a way that will actually make it, I think, a better and more functional bylaw.
Alyssa?
No one has convinced me that the information that's requested as part of a bylaw, not a policy, but a bylaw, which is a big deal, actually, and saying, yeah, sure, we can change it later. I know how Evan actually feels about that, given what it was like to go through bylaw review. So I'm not, no one has made the case that this information can't just as easily be obtained through the current charter provisions as to how town councilors can get information. Because obviously, town councilors cannot create this detailed report without the help of staff. And so we would go, if we got any sort of inkling that there was something going on, we would use the charter provisions that say we can ask for information, and we would certainly do this work. But to stick it in the bylaw just does not make sense. Because what triggers that at that point? So just some people are cranky, and they want to literally, this is way more than a couple of meetings' worth of work to make this report. So I want us to use that charter provision we don't use nearly often enough that says we can request information from the town, and it would cover all these exact same items, and it wouldn't be in the bylaw itself.
Are there further comments? Dorothy?
Can I move that we call the question?
Yes, you can.
Okay, then I so move.
Question's been called. It requires a two-thirds vote? Yes?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. So we're going to vote on the motion to call the question. I need to get to a sheet. I'm going to start with Dorothy Pam. Yes, this is the motion to call the question. Evan Ross.
Aye.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Bell Mills absent. Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Okay, the question has been called. We're now going to the actual amendment to the motion that is on the screen. And it is stated as it appears there. Is there any, there's no further question. We're moving, we're voting on this. I'm going to start with Evan Ross.
No.
George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Bell Mill is absent. Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
No.
Darcy Demont.
No.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Mandy Johanneke.
No.
And Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Motion passes. It is eight in favor. I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Four opposed.
Yeah, eight-four.
Zero abstentions and one absence. And now we're going directly back into the motion as amended. And that is the one that's on your screen, except that in Section H.3, starting in the first line, the words, "and the Surveillance Technology Community Equity Impact Assessment and Policy Guidance" has been eliminated, and the entire Section I has been eliminated, and J. and K. will be renumbered or relettered. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're going to move to the vote. And the vote in this case will start with George Ryan.
Aye.
Kathy Shane.
Yes.
Steve Schreiber.
Aye.
Andy Steinberg.
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz.
Aye.
Shalony Bell Mills absent. Alyssa Brewer.
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis.
Aye.
Darcy Demont.
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye. Mandy Johanneke.
Aye.
Dorothy Pam.
Yes.
Evan Ross.
Aye.
It is unanimous with 12 present and voting yes, 0-0-1 absent. I want to thank two councilors for outstanding work and patience, enormous patience. So, thank you. We are going to move on. There was a suggestion at one point that somebody might want to make a motion that would be under topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair 48 hours in advance. Andy?
Yes. I'm going to move under Rule of Procedure 7.5A as a counselor who invoked in favor of the referral of the solar bylaw moratorium to the planning board and CRC to reconsider that motion. And if there's a second, I will explain the reasoning and what I envision happening.
Is there a second? Panicky's second. Go back, Andy.
Okay. There was an essential piece of information that I was not aware of at the time of the meeting. And I've mentioned this to several other councilors, and they were also unaware of it. And that is General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which is a statutory provision that sets limits on what communities can do in certain kinds of zoning bylaw provisions. And the specific provision is very brief. It says, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw shall prohibit or unreasonably regulate the installation of solar energy systems or the building of structures that facilitate the collection of solar energy, except where necessary to protect the public health, safety, or welfare." And I was concerned because while a bylaw ultimately can be constructed to adhere to that directive, if it is dealing with public health, safety, or welfare, the question still came to mind that a moratorium has the same effect. And I wasn't certain as to what the law was that surrounds that. We, very late in the day, because this has now been raised, received a KP Law, very brief response to the question. But I didn't see that there was sufficient time for all of us to really digest all of this information and determine how we wanted to proceed. And I am aware that, and I have had discussions with one other counselor, Mandy Anarchy, who is, if this passes, would offer an additional motion that she might to address the process question. Because I don't, you know, the whole purpose, if this was to pass this reconsideration motion, wouldn't make sense to then have the discussion tonight because we weren't prepared before, we're not prepared now to have that, to look at that particular provision. But that is what the motion is, is at this point, is just to reconsider.
The motion's been made and seconded. Mandy Jo?
Yeah, I'm going to actually make a motion right now, which is a motion to postpone this discussion to November 22 as the last action item. And I can explain why I'm making that motion now instead of after a vote on the motion to reconsider, if it gets a second.
Is there a second?
I would second.
Mandy Jo?
Yes, so I think people need time to digest what was just revealed to determine whether they actually want to reconsider the vote itself. And so I think it's actually hard to discuss whether it's appropriate to reconsider, to vote on reconsideration, in other words, to vote to hold that discussion or not without knowing that this motion was coming and without knowing, or sometimes maybe not even having read the opinion that came through late this afternoon. And so I think it would be best if we don't even debate reconsider, the motion to reconsider tonight, and we hold that next week after people have had time to digest what was said and think of any questions or not. And then we can have a better discussion on whether reconsideration is even appropriate at that time.
Okay, so.
I have a point of order.
Yes.
So the way that I read the reconsideration is that it has to happen either at the meeting where the vote's taken or the next meeting. And this is at the next meeting, so how can we postpone that?
Point of order. The rules of procedure say next regular meeting. The two meetings we had earlier today were both special meetings.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other further question or comment? Alyssa?
Yeah, I guess it's a point of order. Apparently, I'm very confused. We had two special meetings. What we're in right now is not a special meeting. We're in a regular meeting. So this is when we- We're in a regular meeting. So this is one we should be doing?
To making the motion to reconsider at the next regular meeting, which is this one.
Which we're in right now?
Yes, but a motion to postpone under the rules is allowed on the main motion, which is what I just made, postponing the discussion.
So you believe that you can post, you can, not that we like to use the word, trump the way reconsideration is written? By you postpone instead?
It's not trumping. The motion to reconsider is a motion under rule 7.1, it's just been modified. And under 7.1, that motion can have a motion to postpone, it can have a motion to amend, it, it can have other things.
So I really don't understand those words.
I'm back to my point of order then, now that it's clarified this is the regular meeting. I don't think that's postponable. I mean, I think that's an absolute, it has to be at the next meeting. It has to either be at the meeting or the next meeting. And I don't think that that's a postponable action.
Athena, do you have an opinion on this? Or Paul?
I'm going to pull up the rules so we can look at them together, but we discussed this earlier and I agreed that a motion to postpone was in order at this time.
Thank you. Now, in, in advance of this meeting, knowing that this was going to happen, um, Athena and I discussed it this afternoon and she read through the rules and interprets that in fact, we can have this postponed. Kathy? Please unmute. Please unmute.
I was trying to open a document, I apologize. I'll wait for the clarification, but if it's postponed, I really would like to have the legal opinion in front of us also. You know, I didn't get a chance to read it side by side with Andy's talking about.
Right. It, it will all be in the next meeting if it's postponed. Andy?
Yeah, I, I think you could go either in two directions and get to the same point. But one of the things that I'm very conscious of is that, um, the planning board um, has taken steps to, um, hold a hearing. And, um, if we, as a council, act on this and ultimately determine that we want to continue with the referral, uh, after having, um, looked at the, um, legal opinion regarding section 48, section three and, uh, uh, and, and continue, it can proceed without delaying the process. So either the motion that Mandy made or making a motion, going ahead and voting on reconsideration and then, um, postponing the discussion for one week, um, to give everyone time to look at it is, um, still not going to, um, make it impossible for the planning board to go ahead and have the hearing on the date that it is noticed.
So Kathy, did you have a further comment?
No, sorry, I'll lower my hand.
Andy, did you have a further comment?
No.
Dorothy, do you have a comment?
Yes, I do. Um, it's sometime after 11:00. Uh, this is my ninth hour of the meeting today and I have to tell you, I, truthfully, I can't follow this. And I don't want to do anything about something I didn't have a chance to read that looks, sounds complicated and this whole discussion is complicated. And I think if we proceed, we're, we're just being foolish. So I, I would like to say, let's do this next meeting.
Uh, so I'm going to, um, go with the second motion at this point, which is the motion to postpone. Uh, would you please read the motion again, Mandy?
The motion to postpone to November 22nd as the last action item.
And it's been made in second, is there any further discussion? Alyssa?
Maybe this will make the words make sense in this very tired brain. What you've asked to do, Mandy Jo, is not the nuclear option of postpone. You are making a different variation that's more of a scheduling issue rather than the nuclear option, because the nuclear option would not be appropriate for a motion of reconsideration. But just, this is more of a Robert's Rules kind of deal. Okay, cool. I can, I can work.
That's, this, this basically postpones the discussion until next week. Pat?
I, I just want a, a quick clarification. Um, I'm not having the trouble, I'm not having trouble voting to postpone, but I'm trying to understand the, uh, as the last action item. What does that mean?
In the list of action items that night, it will be the last action item.
So we'll go this late?
No. It means if there's A, B, C, D already, this will be E in the action items.
Aphenable.
Yeah, on, on the irregular agenda, I, I don't know how many meetings she's got or what they look like, but on the main agenda of the meetings, I think there's multiple meetings scheduled, but.
Yes. It would be, I, I understand where it needs to go. Okay? Got it. Um, we're, uh, we're going to go to a vote on the motion to postpone to November 22nd as the last agenda, action item on that agenda. Um, George Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Aye.
Steve Schreiber?
Aye.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Sarah Schwartz?
Aye.
Shalony Bell Mills absent, Alyssa Brewer?
Aye.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Darcy Demont?
Yes.
Lynn Greasmer is an aye, Mandy Johannicky?
Aye.
Dorothy Pam?
Yes.
Evan Ross?
And now.
Okay, it passes. It is 11 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions, and one absent. Um, I want to thank the people that brought this to my attention for bringing it to me prior to the council meeting. Uh, we did not do committee reports last time, uh, in any length, but if people have comments, please go ahead, Mandy Jo, Community Resources Committee.
We have a meeting tomorrow at 7:00 PM where the main agenda items are making, deliberating and making recommendations on the four, um, zoning proposals that have recently had closed hearings.
Thank you. Uh, elementary school building, Kathy?
Oh, we'll be upright and early tomorrow morning with 13 other people on an MSBA panel to go from three design proposals down to one. So by the end of tomorrow, we should have a designer selected. Although then Paul and others will have to negotiate a contract. So hopefully we're at the beginning of the intensity. But I have to stress, it's going to be early and pretty intense because we have three good choices. Um, and so we do interviews of them and then we vote.
Okay, um, Finance Committee, Andy?
I think that we've had a clearly talked about tomorrow's Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you. GOL, George?
GOL meets on Wednesday, 10:30. We will be looking at, uh, I believe for zoning bylaws and, uh, continuing to work on getting our committee in order, preparing for the transition.
Okay, TSO, Evan?
Uh, TSO is deliberating on parking regulation changes to Kendry Place following its public hearing on October 21st. Uh, this Thursday, there'll be a full written report from TSO to the council for our next meeting.
Okay, any liaison reports? Paul, did you have anything, there were no minutes to approve. Paul, did you have anything else you wanted to add from the town manager's report?
Sure, the only thing I want to add, um, was that the Board of Registars has scheduled the recount of the, um, district for, uh, race for Tuesday, December, uh, November 23rd at 10:00 AM at the Banks Community Center, all to be, we make sure they can get the room and all the, all the people assigned, but that's sort of the schedule at this point in time.
So that's Tuesday, November 23rd, at what time?
10:00 AM.
Okay, under council, town council comments?
I had a question.
Yes, Paul. I mean, I'm sorry, Mandy Jo.
Thank you. On the, on the manager's report, uh, does the certification of the full election have to wait till after that recount? Or does the clerk and the Board of Registars certify all but that precinct? Mainly, is the library part being certified prior to the 23rd, I guess is the basic import of my question.
The only race that cannot be certified is that one individual council race. Um, but the clerk has not certified that race, that the, uh, the elections yet, she has more work to do and she, um, you know, she, when she completes it, she'll give me a certified vote and we will send that off.
Um, I have a follow-up question to that follow-up question, that is, did, were there any additional votes that came in that were counted today?
I don't know the answer, it looks like Evan does.
Evan?
There was one overseas ballot that was counted this morning by the Board of Registars.
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then I have another question. So Paul, the library vote will be certified? And are we proceeding then to accept money from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay, are there any further questions? Yes, Alyssa?
This is our generic hurry up and ask it and then go home section. Um, is in regards to the town manager's report from last time, which as always is very chock full of information and we didn't get a chance to talk about last week either. Is, um, wonderful that the shelter is now open over at Emmanuel. The less wonderful part is that there are homes around Emmanuel Lutheran that at least one door has been knocked on by people looking for the shelter. So if you could please check in with the people who organized moving it to Emmanuel and maybe improve the signage, make it a little clearer what side of the street it's on, because we all know if you drive by there, that Emmanuel's kind of set back. And so people might not be noticing it right away. And given the student problems that we have been experiencing in this part of North Amherst and a particularly uh, exciting year, um, it's just kind of added to that angst for the neighborhood at this point. And this is the closest that the shelter has been to owner occupied homes, which is not to say that rental occupied homes are not also homes. It's just a, it's a more residential area, let's put it that way.
Yes, I think that happened early on when the shelter opened and, um, I think they've communicated with their guests, but we can reemphasize that for them.
Um, okay, any other questions, comments to the council, to the town manager? Um, I've provided you with yet another update on the future agendas, it's still a draft. And after tonight, I will be looking at it again. If you have further comments you would like to make, I have also still waiting to receive uh, responses back from several counselors on the issue of whether or not they are available for a meeting on November 29th and/or a meeting on December 13th. Uh, so I'm reminding you to let me know that. And also any other feedback you might have. Are there any questions or comments? George?
Just quickly then, my understanding was that you wanted to hear back only if we could not attend, is that correct?
Thank you, that's perfectly fine.
Silence means?
Silence means yes. Thank you. Dorothy?
Just to be fairly quick then, the 29th was at, in the evening at 6:30?
Yes.
And the 13th was at what time?
Well, on that evening, we are starting the evening by doing a orientation for counselors for the next council. It'll be after that.
Okay, right, okay, I could do, yeah, I could do that.
All right, and, and you'll drop me a note if you have any other comments. Thank you. Any other comments at this time, Alyssa?
Yeah, I'm not going to do the December 13th, that meeting for the new incoming counselors doesn't need to be that night, that can be rescheduled. So if you can make it a 6:30 town council meeting, I can do that on the 13th. I will not work around an entirely optional meeting that could be held in January, doesn't need to be held December 13th.
Yeah, thank you. Dorothy?
No, no, sorry. Um, I'm, I'm down, my hands down, there we go.
Got it. Are there any further comments? Seeing none, the meeting is adjourned and it's 11:24.